It's 5:30, and I would like to call the September 24th, 2025 Town Council meeting to order. And if I could have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Caitlin, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Council?
Yes, I would like to move item number 14 to follow item 10.
Perfect. I was going to do the same thing, DeeDee, so thank you. Do we have a consensus on that? Yeah, John? John's fine?
Fine with me.
Dinah? Mary Ann? I think we have a consensus, but if everyone's okay. Any other deletions, substitutions, or additions? There not being?
Sorry. Just to be clear, it's coming after item number 10?
Number 10, correct. Before we begin, I want to congratulate our amazing town clerk Caitlin Copeland, who just celebrated her 10th anniversary with the town of Juno Beach. Caitlin is always such a pleasure to work with. Whenever you call her, she's always pleasant. She always says there's no problem at all, whatever you want. And she's really an amazing town clerk, and I think we're... She's an asset to our town, for sure. So I'd like to give her a round of applause, if we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's been a pleasure working here, and I continue to do so.
10 years. Okay, comments from the town manager?
Mayor, I'll just echo your sentiments regarding Caitlin, and congratulate her on her 10 years as well. No other comments.
Great, thank you. Comments from the town attorney?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Any comments from the staff? There being none, we'll go ahead and start comments from the public.
Uh, yes, we have on Zoom Michael Karp. Mr. Karp, your three minutes for public comment starts now. I'll just ask him to unmute again. Mr. Karp?
Comments from the town attorney?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Please turn the YouTube version off, and you can make your three-minute public comment.
None. We'll go ahead and start comments from the public.
Uh, yes, we have on Zoom Michael-
Mr. Karp will need to return the YouTube version off.
Three minutes for public comment starts now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Speak loudly, though, because we're not hearing-
From the town attorney?
Please turn the YouTube version off, and you can make your three-minute public comment.
None. We'll go ahead and start comments from the public.
Uh, yes, we have on Zoom Michael-
Mr. Karp will need to turn the YouTube version off.
Comment starts now.
Hey, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Speak up a little bit, though, because it's kind of muted a little. But turn off your YouTube version.
Make your three-minute public-
None. We'll go ahead and start comments from the public.
Uh, yes, we have on-
Okay, he may come back. Jeff Jennings?
Hi, I'm Jeff Jennings. I live in Juno Ridge. I'm at 1667 Pleasant Drive. And I know we talked about this before in the past, but we'd like to reiterate the fact that the Waterford is going to put five-foot hedges in our backyards, which is great for, you know, to block the view of the condos, the 51-foot condos that are coming in our backyard. And, uh, but they're still not enough, and they're talking about starting the construction before they put in the landscaping. And I understand, you know, maybe there would be an accident, somebody will hit it with a bulldozer or whatever else, but it's not that expensive. It would be great to have that in place before they start construction. We'd ask that you make that a stipulation, that they put the hedges in before they start construction. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
Scott Shaw?
Hi, I'm Scott Shaw. I reside at 400 Apollo Drive. I spoke at the August 26th council meeting and gave my opinion that Attorney Rubin unethically withheld information regarding the approval of the plan for 401 Diana. During my talk, I mentioned evidence to support- Hi, uh, I'm Scott Shaw. I reside at 400-
Sorry, go ahead.
And found even more evidence afterwards. I'm raising this issue again because the response from Mayor Wheeler and Manager Cole was so disappointing. Mayor Wheeler wrote that she could not discuss an existing case. That's kind of silly, because the 401 Diana case is 100% in the public domain. Manager Cole claimed he was unable to conclude there was unethical withholding, even though he had a wheelbarrow load of evidence in front of him. Then, at the September 16th council meeting, DeeDee Halpern argued for the termination of Manager Cole for other reasons, and I have to agree. In that same September 16th meeting, we heard about the issue of the 90-10 residential to commercial ratio at Plaza de Mayor, which has business owners and town people upset. They are upset to the point that there was a verbal confrontation at the August 22 council hour. I learned of the confrontation at the rally a few days later, and also watched Assistant Chief Soloyo describe it at an hour and 58 minutes on the video of that September meeting. Unfortunately, the mayor did not take the opportunity to clarify the 90-10 ratio with a simple sentence, such as the rate of the ratio residential to commercial at the plaza will be 75-25. Instead, the mayor went on an angry diatribe against DeeDee Halpern and Diana Davis. So for all of you, we need to think about all this and plan on voting on Election Day. This town looks to me like it needs a good housewinding. Halpern and Diana Davis. I've got one more issue. At September 15th PZ meeting, an agenda item was approval of a 7,500-foot home at 451 Ocean Drive at the corner of Ocean and Diana. All of it's on video. Four of the five board members plus alternate Rudolph went on for 25 minutes talking about how the house is too big. Most recent home, most nearby homes are less than 3,000 feet. The proposal was for a home twice that size plus 25% more. Then they approved the plan. I've heard repeatedly that the city building is on land once owned by the family of the owner of 451. About 20 years ago, we bought land in North Carolina near the estate of a family who had been around for many decades. Family members who lived nearby had a sense of entitlement. It was like a lingering claim on our land because they always lived there. I had three instances where they parked broken-down vehicles in the field. It's as though you can legitimize encroachment on your neighbor's property by talking repeatedly about how long you've been around. It reminds me of 451 Ocean. It's a lovely story, but it doesn't mean anything. But don't forget about 401 Diana. That's where the new owner wants to build a mansion that hovers over our home and encroaches on our privacy. I've nicknamed that plan "The Nine-Toilet Airbnb."
Thank you.
David Cox?
Mayor, as a point of order, I was wondering if you could reiterate the rules that we've recently adopted for council decorum and public comment, because there may be people that may not realize the new rules. Specifically, could you mention the time limits and how that works, and extensions, if any, and also addressing comments to the council, not the individual council members or general public?
Sure. We allow public comment for three minutes. It's up to the presiding officer if I wish to extend it. I typically do extend it, and I try to be fair to everybody. So that's why Caitlin will look at me. I'll usually acknowledge that I'll give them 30 seconds more. I will probably start mentioning at the three-minute mark that you have 30 seconds left, so it doesn't go over that amount. And then the other question was about the... What was the other one?
So that's why Caitlin will look at me-
Addressing comments to the council?
Yeah, so anyone that is-
I will probably start-
Anyone that is addressing, should not, anyone that's speaking during council comments should be addressing the whole council and not calling out particular council members by names. That's what John is talking about. And this is very important, because we want to try and keep decorum in the meetings. And so that's how we should have the public comments moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Karp? Michael Karp, your three minutes for public comment.
In the meetings, and-
You'll need to return the YouTube version off.
The public comments moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Karp? Michael Karp, your three minutes-
Please turn the YouTube version off, and then you have your three minutes for public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm assuming everyone can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Uh, I'd like to read into the record the following email, which was sent from Diana Davis to Scott Shaw, dated April 16th, 2025, at 1:05 PM. The email reads as follows, and I am quoting verbatim. "Enclosed is an example of a petition for a writ of certiorari. In my opinion, it is always better to have an attorney representing you in a proceeding. As you can see from the style of the case, you'll be filing suit against the town of Juno Beach." My emphasis, filing a lawsuit against the town of Juno Beach for its land use decision if you wanted to challenge the appearance review of 410 Diana Lane made by the Planning and Zoning Board on April 7th, 2025. Also, there's a time limit of 30 days from the date of the decision to file suit to the challenge. Please check this timeframe. It may be shorter, but it is not longer. So time would be of the essence in this matter. Take care. Diana Davis, Vice Mayor Pro Tem, Town Council, Juno Beach. Ms. Davis sent this email in her official capacity as a council member of the Juno Beach Town Council. She has taken it upon herself to give legal advice and practical advice to the person who filed the lawsuit against the town. This is most likely a breach of her ethics, but it is certainly a breach of her oath of office. Davis swore an oath to defend the laws of, amongst other things, the town of Juno Beach. She swore an oath to defend the laws of the town of Juno Beach. She has also breached her fiduciary responsibility to both the town and its residents to safeguard the town's finances. She didn't like the results of the Planning Commission vote, whereby the Planning Commission approved the site plan and elevations for 410 Diana Lane. So she directed and/or advised a citizen to file suit against the town, forcing the town to spend taxpayer money to defend itself. As a result of these ethical and oath violations, as well as the breach of her fiduciary obligations to the town and its citizens, I demand that she submit her resignation immediately.
I'd like time to reply.
No, we're not answering any public comments. Diana, sorry.
Mr. Karp has all my emails. He should have read the-
We're not answering, Diana. We're not answering any, Diana.
Email.
You're out of order, Diana. You're out of order. This is not, this is public comment. Diana, you're out of order. You're not supposed to be replying to public comments. This is their time for the public to speak, all right? Thank you. Next public comment.
Correcting an earlier-
Next public comment, please.
David Cox?
Can you turn the microphone on, please? You hit the button on the microphone. The big one on the bottom, the space looking. It's the... No, it's off. It's, you gotta get it off red.
Oh, here. Gotcha. Okay, sorry. "I renew my request that the town put lids on the open trash cans all over town property. They attract and feed the rodent population, which has grown since the many ongoing construction projects around town have disturbed their habitat. Restaurants can do a better job of securing their garbage. Make sure there are lids on the dumpsters, and the smelly flesh is secured in strong bags. In my building, we recently caught eight rats in five days in spite of the fact that we have the cleanest dumpsters and trash room according to waste management. Building plans for Juno Beach properties should be kept in perpetuity electronically. Cost is negligible, and that is the duty of government on all levels. Our country faces a severe crisis. We can't get along. Let's follow Charlie Kirk's example and talk civilly with one another, even when we disagree totally. Let's practically find the areas where we can agree and improve the lives of our community." Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Hollins?
Charles Hollings, President, Pleasant Ridge Property Owners Association, 1679 Pleasant Drive. Good evening, Council. Pleasant Ridge supports whatever will improve the lives of Waterford residents and does no harm nor adversely affects Pleasant Ridge residents. Since I was here last month, we have met with life space management, communicated with town staff, and attended last week's P&amp;Z board meeting. We seem to all agree that the original proposed landscape buffer along the Pleasant Drive properties was lacking. And, it seems, at least verbally, my suggestion to plant a five-foot-high collusive rosea hedge is acceptable to all parties. This species will grow to a maximum height of 18 to 20 feet, providing excellent privacy barrier to light, sight, and sound for people living on both sides of the barrier. The proposed three-story building is set back 30 feet from the property line. That's the distance from me to that wall. And the building is to be 51 feet high. The top of the light well right here is only about 35 feet. Some concern was expressed about maintaining the hedge this high in its closest proximity to the retention lake, which is located in the southeast corner of the Waterford property. There is also concern about the FPL easement along the south property line. My suggestion via email last week to town staff, WGI, and life space management was to shorten the hedge along the lake bank, which only affects the easternmost Pleasant Drive property. Not only will the lake provide some privacy, but the proposed building is at least 75 feet away from this house at its closest point. That's over twice the distance it is from the other six residences. I also suggested that the issue regarding the proximity of the hedge to the FPL easement could be resolved by moving a portion of the sidewalk a couple of feet closer to the building, reducing the width of the sidewalk, or a combination of the two. I'm confident that a mutually beneficial resolution of the issues can be found prior to next month's council meeting. I respect the request that all existing conditions of approval remain in force. I also request that the council make planting a five-foot-high collusive rosea hedge along the Pleasant Drive properties a condition of approval. Furthermore, maintenance of the hedge at the maximum height allowed by town code must also be defined in these conditions. I don't think I'm asking too much. I'm not asking to have the building pushed back farther from the property line. I'm not asking for the building to be lower to two stories. I'm not asking for the windows to be deleted from the south side of the building. I'm just asking for a hedge that, over time, will help create the same privacy that residents on both sides enjoy today. Thank you for listening. I look forward to seeing you again next month.
Thank you.
Cynthia Frazier?
Good evening, Council. Cynthia Frazier. I'm a resident here in Juno Beach. I did a little research on condominium development in our town, and I thought it might be helpful to give a reminder of our brief history on that. In the 1960s, the first high-rise condos appeared along our shoreline with the Barclay and the Colony. In the 1970s brought a big surge in construction with developments such as Juno by the Sea, The Tower, San Remo Town Homes, Royal Hempstead, and Brigadoon. The 1980s saw another wave with Horizon, Juno Ocean Club, Juno Shores, Beach Comer, Pelican Walk Condos, Sea Images, and Waterford. Then, in the 1990s, we saw beachfront at Juno Beach, oceanfront at Juno Beach, waterfront, and sea view. By 2000, Ocean Royale was added. More recently, we've seen the development of Coretta, a five-story building, and the upcoming Polte project on the former Christmas tree lot with three-story townhomes. Looking ahead, Plaza de Mayor is poised for redevelopment, and the Holiday Inn property has recently sold, which will bring further projects. What this shows is that Juno Beach has experienced steady and cyclical periods of growth since the 1960s. Development has always been part of our community's story. Importantly, while we may not be seeing 14-story towers, as in decades past, thank you, we are clearly on another wave of development today. My point in sharing this is that progress and growth are natural courses in a coastal town like ours. We cannot stop development altogether. What we can do is work together, citizens, council, developers, to make the progress as thoughtful, balanced, and pleasant as possible for everyone who calls Juno Beach home. I stress the term "work together." As council members, it is imperative that you all act with integrity and honesty to move our town through another development transition. I'd also like to extend the words "honesty and integrity" to my fellow citizens of Juno Beach. Thank you.
Glenn Black?
My name is Glenn Black. I was born and raised here. Been here for 71 years in this town. And I've seen a lot of changes. Unlike Cynthia, being here maybe one year in Juno. I don't like the development. I don't like the condos. I'm not for it at all. I don't like 7,000 square-foot homes peeking out. This isn't New York City. People that are realtors, people that are making money, they're all in it. I'm not for it. I'm against it. I come home the other day, yesterday, down Donald Ross, they had all these little cones. For whatever reason, I don't know, and they made it one lane. It was such a crap show that cars were backed up all the way to the railroad track. By the time I went from my house all the way back to get pictures, the cones were gone. Apparently, they called the police, they called the town of Juno, they may have called Peggy Wheeler. It's a mess. I was born and raised here. I fished all my life. I used to see one or two condos on the beach. I'm not saying 20 condos, 30 condos, let's live with it. I'm saying, let's put a stop to this in this little town. You all have to live with it, or you can move on. But it ain't fair to everybody. It's fair to whoever wants it, for whatever selfish reason, but I ain't buying it. I'm very upset. You may look out over the ocean, like some of you live on the beach, and say, "Oh, this is a beautiful place." You may look at the stones, Gail Nelson, this and that. We need a road going through Marchinsky. She lives on the other side. You don't want to put a bridge through because you'll upset Gail Mutton, Gail Nelson. It's not right. You all ought to, and don't look at me with a smile, mister. You all need to think about what you're doing to this town. I'm done. Thank you.
William Kimball? William Kimball?
I got buried in the applause there. Back to the old microphone. Sometimes it's comedy, sometimes it's not. Tonight, we're looking at harmony. Actually, we should all be looking at harmony. I've played in bands my whole life. And when the band's not in harmony, we suck. Just plain English. We're not working. Everyone's ready to throw cabbage and rotten fruit at us. But then, when we get in harmony, it's working. It's beautiful music. And I feel like we're out of, we're not in harmony, all of us. The residents, the staff, the council. I just feel like Juno Beach is, we're not in harmony. Everyone's, there's a lot of finger pointing. There's a lot of really miscommunication. And in harmony, it's because people actually get together and look at each other and find the middle, not on either side, and go, "Shut up," and throw rocks at each other from either side. And somehow, we need to get there. I don't know how that is. I would hope and pray we do. I would hope that the staff has their recommendations, the council has theirs, the community has theirs, and they all meet together somewhere in some beautiful harmonious way and create something that is a legacy to live by and die by, because we are losing it. And there's so much chaos in the world, and I believe it's a reflection of what's happening. I believe that we see the world as, it's not in harmony. There's so much happening. And we can actually create harmony within this little town, and hopefully, it spreads out. And if it doesn't, that's okay, because we have to live in this little town. And I hope we can really get together and see each other and not judge each other and not be angry at each other, but actually go, "Hey, okay, let me hear..." Like John Stelluto the other day, he came to me and he spoke to me about what was happening with him, and I listened to him. And he made great points. I didn't hear and didn't know his situation, so we didn't communicate. It was just on, he was given false information on him losing his property rights. So if we can see each other eye to eye, and I agree that, yes, last time when I was here, I believe that we should speak to all together. So let's hope that we can move forward and really do what's right for this town and for all of us that live in it, because some of us will live here for the rest of our lives, some of us will move on. But we're going to leave it to those who follow us. And I really hope we leave something magical and harmonious and something that really represents harmony, because we have a moment in time to do that. And it's up to you and you to listen to each other and to hear each other and to not just go, "Well, I'm going to do this because..." If there are some that say they want the condos, then figure out how to make it work in harmony with the others. So I hope we all can find harmony.
Thank you.
Teo Mendez? Teo Mendez?
Hello, everyone. My name is Teo Mendez Lynch. I'm the new owner of the Fish House in the corner of Donald Ross and US Highway 1. Thank you. It's my first intervention here with the council. I'm from Argentina. I bought the restaurant two years ago, and this is my second meeting, or third meeting, that I attend, but it's the first time I speak. And I'm learning a lot about what is going on in the town, fortunately and unfortunately. I have a business, which is different than living in the town. Hopefully, one day, I'm going to be able to move into Juno Beach, because I love the place. It was a discovery. After I looked for places to buy a restaurant, I ended buying this one. And I got to know the town and this concept of little town that you have and how you want to maintain it that way. I am exposed to all of what you've been talking about because of, first, because I need customers. And there are not enough customers in Juno. During the season, everything changes for a while, but any business in Juno cannot survive just with Juno residents. So we can kind of sometime ask for traffic. And you don't like traffic. And, but we need it. We need people at least to come between five and nine from other towns to spend money in our businesses. Plaza de Mayor, the CBS, the place in front of us that now they're going to build townhouses around. This building that they just built in the corner that was empty, when I bought the restaurant, I was wondering how- how a town had such a prime corner empty. I didn't know about it, but a couple months later, started construction of this building. I understand for the balance of applauses that probably you don't like that building. It looks much better than nothing or a gas station. I don't know. But from my opinion, from, for what I see, looks like a nice building. I think, I wrote a few things here to say, but after listening to all of you, I changed a couple things. I think you're suffering something that is happening in the whole world because you're surrounded by towns. And I'm saying this because I looked around before buying this place. I looked for other places. And you're surrounded by towns like Jupiter, like Palm Beach Gardens, like, oh, I'm sorry.
I can give you 30 more seconds if you can kind of wrap it up.
And Palm Beach Gardens, North Palm Beach. I mean, everybody's growing. So I guess developers are looking for land. I don't know who owns the land in Juno, but probably they can build. I hope you are able to stop weird things and you allow good developers. Whatever happens, I hope Juno stays like it is or a little more developed. Definitely, commercial brings more traffic and residential brings less traffic. That's what I found out from going, doing my demographic study before I bought the restaurant.
Thank you. I'm going to have to stop you now.
I'll come back.
All right. Thank you.
Ann Bosso.
I've been attending meetings longer than anyone in this room. I think John Calligan's probably the second. But anyway, I've never seen the town as upset and torn apart as I have today. But first of all, everyone on this dais voted, with the exception of John, he wasn't here, voted for Coretta. So why is the mayor and the town manager, who wasn't even here, why are they taking all the blame in heat for Coretta? That's number one. Number two, the town manager has a master's degree in public service and management. He was the student of the year in the American Society of Public Administration in 2002. He's got over 30 years of experience in public administration. Why is he being challenged by DeeDee Halpern, who's a marketing consultant, and Diana Davis, an elder care attorney with environmental legal skills? Diana was elected primarily because she touted herself as saving Pelican Lake. Has anyone looked at the lake lately? Why are these two people, women with no real estate planning or appraising experience, both trying to change our codes? Number three, the money. Do you know how much money has been wasted in this town in the last few years? We paid $30,000, I believe, for a headhunter. We got Dave, when Joe Labella left. That manager lasted about nine months, I believe, with all the unrest and so forth. Fighting in the council, he left. Then we were, the headhunters gave us a discount, and we hired Rob Cole. Now, within, I don't know how many months, six, seven months, we're trying to fire him again. So we're going to have to pay another $30,000. But what difference does it make? It's not their money. Okay, then we paid $125,000 for a master plan. Council and residents aren't happy with that. So again, what's $125,000 of other people's money? Then we paid Shinmore $65,000 for code reviews. We've got, what have we gotten for our money there? All we've had is fighting for the last two or three years over the codes. We paid Mr. Karas $15,000 to $18,000 for a strategic plan. Again, what did we get there? Then Diana Davis wanted to hire a consultant. I'm not sure if what, to the tune of, for what, but to the tune of $20,000 to $27,000. Now we go into attorneys' bills.
30 more seconds.
Okay. 29, there are two council members that are using Lynn Rubin more than anyone. 37% of the funds of Lynn's bills were spent by DeeDee Halpern, 29% by Diana, 4% by Mary Ann, and 13 by Peggy.
Siobhan O'Donnell.
Hi, Siobhan, North Lyra Circle. Boy, this sound system is bad. There's so much to say, I don't know what to say, where to start. But to tag on to the broker here, the real estate broker, money is being completely squandered in this town. And I feel the root of the problem started when Peggy Wheeler and her police foundation infiltrated an election. And our mayor, who was extremely financially prudent, he had one of the highest degrees of managing money that you can obtain, the highest degree, was smeared, he was defamed. Mr. Sorsby wrote a letter defaming him, along with Jack Luther, who was the president, vice president and treasurer of the Police Foundation, which you take credit for founding, Peggy Wheeler, Peggy Davies Wheeler. And now he's gone. And now that Alex is gone, it's been mayhem. Mayhem and madness. It's as if Peggy Wheeler put on track shoes and she's in a full sprint to break every commercial zoning code we have to fill the town with condos, which are very lucrative for your developer friends. And Peggy Wheeler told me to my face during the campaign, she was not a developer. And later, I saw her online resume, which I think she might have taken down since, that bragged about her subdivisions, commercial, residential, her accomplishments as a developer. I believe there's other facts that can show she's a developer. And why are, you know, we now have a town manager who, I think Mr. Cole, Rob Cole, has been in three different towns in two years. And there's absolute mayhem since you got here. I went to the, I watched the August 6 council meeting from beginning to the end more than once. And when I got Mr. Cole's newsletter that was dubbed "The Facts," I almost fell off my chair. I don't know what, I don't know what the manager was writing about. But it wasn't about the August 6 meeting. Nothing in that newsletter reflected what happened in the meeting. It was a very polished, slick word mass to just make people think the opposite happened at the August 6 meeting. And I find dishonesty is one of the hallmarks right now of our town. Dishonesty, immorality. I think Will said that, you know, a few people said that it's a reflection of our country as a whole. And in order for us to get the harmony that Will so eloquently said, he always speaks so eloquently about the heart and soul of the town, we have to clean this council off. Peggy, I ask you to resign. Mr. Cole, I ask you to resign. You know, people are telling John Calligan false statements that Alex Cook voted for Coretta. Peggy Wheeler and the developer's wife, Eileen Kotranakis, voted to have the zoning removed of our 7525 on the commercial corridor. Alex voted against it. Alex protested it. The other four councillors agreed.
Yeah, you can go a little bit longer.
And DeeDee, later, who was hoodwinked by staff, oh, this is great. She apologized repeatedly for having voted for it. And here we are stuck with Coretta. I know Teo likes it. And I will help you market in other towns, Teo. I'm sure you can drive business from other towns. But we don't have to have these mausoleum buildings put up. And we should have a whole different approach to respecting our zoning and codes, which you will not, Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler.
Thank you.
Other comments received for other items on the agenda.
Okay, let's get to the council action items. We're going to go to the budget hearing. Emily is out of town, so Caitlin, I'll let you start. And then we can do public comment.
Consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda. I am so sorry.
One quick, the statement was missed from the last meeting by Councilmember Halpern, so that'll be included in the backup of the September 16 meeting.
So it would be as amended. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Wheeler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta. Microphone, please. Oh, Davis, you as well, I think. Thank you. Councilmember Halpern.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, now we're in the budget hearing. Approving the millage rate and budget for 2025, 2026. Emily is out of town, so Caitlin, I'll let you start, and then we can do public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Emily is out of the office, but she is available by Zoom if council has any additional questions. Tonight, we're here for the second and final budget hearing for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. First issue to discuss is the percent increase from above the rolled-back rate. The Town of Juno Beach has a rolled-back rate of 1.7219. The proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 millage rate of 1.8195 is a 5.67% increase above the rolled-back rate. This millage will generate $4,596,375 in budgeted ad valorem revenue. The next slide shows fiscal year 2025, 26 revenues. In total, this budget has $10,645,492 in revenue, 1.3% decrease from the prior year. The next slide shows the expenditure budgets for the legislative finance and administration and comprehensive planning departments. This slide shows the expenditure budgets for the law enforcement, public works, and general government departments. We're now open for public comments if the mayor wants to open.
Yes, go ahead.
I have Siobhan O'Donnell.
Yes, I would like to ask that the budget include all the costs for our fine police officers. We have some of the best police officers that you could find, and this town can afford to pay them without having Peggy Wheeler's Police Foundation come here and say, we will pay them for you. We can pay them. We have paid them for long before Peggy Wheeler's Police Foundation was created, a private foundation that refuses to open its books to tell everybody here in this town who gives them money and how much money they get. And that money then is used to buy the police whatever they want. And it creates what a former council member said, it's like your neighbor. Your child goes to the neighbor's house. The neighbor buys them whatever they want. Their wish list, I want this, I want that, buy it for me. And the neighbor buys it. That child is so happy. But when he goes home to his parents, who might have discipline and budgets, he's confused. His parents won't buy him things, but his neighbor will. And then whose loyalty does the child, who is the child loyal to? We should be paying our police. We should be budgeting for it. And I hope, Diane, I hope you stop voting for the Police Foundation. I really hope you do. Because they, Mr. Jack Luther and Larry Sorsby, retired CEO, I think, of Hoffnanian, they smeared our good mayor. And all our mayor did was try to protect the zoning in this town to keep the town the way the majority of the residents want it. People moved here and they put their life savings into their home because they liked what they saw here. But developer Wheeler and now her sidekick, Robert Cole, are on a full sprint to get Dana Little to overhaul our entire plan of our town, to change 90/10, 90% residential in the commercial corridor, where we should have 25% commercial. 25% commercial is very generous in a lot that zoned 100% commercial. We have a sliding scale to let them go all the way down to only put 25% commercial. But Peggy's bright idea, I don't know how many friends you have as developers, was let's let Coretta come in and let them put 90% residential. And let's just throw our zoning away. And that happened on Polte as well. And it's just, for the budget, I would just ask, let us pay for our police. We have some of the best. We should pay them. We love them and we want to protect them, and they should come forward. Mr. Chief Smith should come up and say whatever he needs. Make your needs known. What you want, we want to pay you. And if you raise our taxes to pay it, we would love it. Because without the police, it's very hard to live without safety. It's one of the very basic things in life that you need is safety. And I thank you, chief.
Those are all the comments I received for this item with public comments.
Okay. Chief, do you want to just answer that question that about the budget and the items that the Police Foundation donates to the police department does not pay the police salaries? Just so everybody knows, the foundation does not pay for police salaries. And the items that the Police Foundation donate are items that are above and beyond what the police chief does have in his budget. So if you want to just explain that to everyone?
Yeah, I'd like to think that it's a partnership with the Police Foundation, the community. That's where the money comes from, most of it. Some of it does come from outside people. It doesn't pay for any salaries. And it usually pays for things that weren't budgeted, became up in the middle of the year. So instead of waiting whatever, you know, six months, eight months, it allows us to buy something that we feel will improve the quality of life and the safety of the community much quicker than waiting for the new budget cycle. Excuse me, I got a little cold going on. But again, it's, the necessities is paid for the town. The town pays for our cars, pays for most of our equipment, our training. I mean, if you look at the budget, it's a $3.7 million budget, I believe, for the police department. So the town pays a lot of money. And again, the foundation has done a lot of great stuff, and it's funded by mostly residents. So we're happy to have them.
Thank you. We appreciate you clarifying that. This agenda item is the final budget hearing. So council has approved the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget for 2025, 26 at the last meeting. It's been stated that there are no changes from what's been approved at the last meeting. Does council want discussion, or do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor. I was going to read the resolution by title before we vote.
All right, thank you. And then we can go to you, DeeDee, after that.
Yeah, just a follow-up item. I'd like to know what the outcome was for the, I guess it's the police bargaining or some kind of negotiation. Council had a meeting about, I guess, I don't know if it's called collective bargaining, but I didn't hear any update on the outcome of that. Did we have an outcome of that?
The update on collective bargaining is planned for after Emily returns from her vacation. We'll be touching base with council to apprise you of the current status of those negotiations at that time. And we'll potentially be engaged in another executive session to discuss any content that we might need to gain guidance from in a setting that is appropriate for those types of conversations. Thank you.
So, thank you. Do we need money set aside? Are there, that usually sometimes results in increases. So does this affect the budget we're approving?
The budget that we're proposing accounts for what direction we've been provided from council in negotiations.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Mary Ann, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, Diana.
I appreciate the feedback on the line-by-line items that I had questions on from Rob and Emily. There is $100,000 in the budget for Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council for the master plan. And I'd just like to acknowledge that the work for Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council is stopped until we get agreed upon community vision that they'll be pursuing within the master plan.
Is that a statement, or you want to get an answer on that, Diana?
I want an answer on that. I don't know if I need a consensus or a motion. I'm fine with that money staying in the budget, but it needs to have an asterisk that it won't be spent until the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council is stopped until we can get agreed upon community vision to move forward.
Right. And Rob, maybe you can, you know, answer to that because obviously, if they're not doing the work and haven't proceeded, I wouldn't have think they would be cutting checks for them. But maybe you can answer what their contract states.
Yeah, not having anticipated a question on the payment schedule for Treasure Coast, I can't speak to that specifically. But what I will say, with no qualms whatsoever, is Treasure Coast would not be compensated for any work they have not yet completed in accordance with the terms and conditions of their contract. As to their work stopping, know that their work has not stopped because in order to gain additional public engagement, they actually have to do work. So they're following consensus council direction from the last meeting. They will be conducting a meeting with C. Oates, as was directed by council.[1798.01] They are amidst planning an invitational work session with town council as directed by town council. They're working with staff on that. And they're also beginning to compile plans and timing and content for something like a charrette, and hopefully we're going to make that as fun as possible pursuant to council member Halpern's suggestion, which I think is a good one. So, no, they're not stopping work. In fact, they're expanding the public engagement that they had otherwise planned, but will only be paid according to the contract.
Any other questions, Diana?
Also, on tonight's agenda is information regarding a community survey for the master development plan. I guess I would like a timeline as to how these dollars will be dispersed to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council based on the work that's anticipated, because I really do think that this community survey needs to be the basis of all their work going forward.
Okay, is this something you can get together with Rob Cole, and you guys can discuss that?
As long as there's an agreement that it comes back to council before we cut them another check, that's fine with me.
I, Rob, you, I can't.
I'll have to review the contract. You know, whatever the payment terms and conditions are, they are, but what I'll say is Treasure Coast has been very cooperative. They've done things that we've asked them to do. I don't imagine there being a problem. I've seen other contracts where we've probably paid out too quickly and were delivered products that were not satisfactory and had insufficient funds remaining at the end to deal with that problem. I am not the person who does that. I am a different manager, and I approach contracts responsibly, and I have to adhere, of course, to the terms and conditions they're in. I'd be happy to share those with you. We'll talk about when the next payment is due. If a payment is due according to contract, I cannot violate that contract, but at the same time, I don't know that there is one that's coming up. I think we have to play through it as the contract requires, recognizing we have a partner who is working with us to achieve each of the council-directed goals.
And just briefly, the contract that we have had the draft master plan coming to us in August, and then they were going to complete that by October. So the Gantt chart that was included in the contract only went through October. So it was kind of my understanding that the contract was over in October unless we did an extension or there was some other, some other action taken by the town.
The action taken by the town was to request additional public engagement before a draft report is produced. So clearly, the vendor would not be paid according to the contract for delivery of a draft report that was otherwise due in October if they haven't produced that report. I'm going to require that we see that report before that payment is made, and they'll only be paid according to work completed according to the terms and conditions of the contract.
Any other questions, Diana?
That's it.
All right, John?
No questions, but did we decide anything there that Diana requested? I wasn't sure where we ended up when Diana, you said, "You're okay as long as A, B, and C happens." Did we consent to that? Do you take it that we consented, or we did not?
I guess I'd like to see the revised contract that has the additional duties for public outreach that were cited by Mr. Cole, because that wasn't in our original contract. So I haven't seen a revised contract. I'm happy to see a revised contract in any of the cost per task in the revised contract.
So Rob, what you're saying is they have not revised the contract, so the requirement, or what you want, Diana, is a revised contract presented to the town. Is that what you're asking for?
A revised contract submitted to council.
Go ahead, Rob.
There's no revised contract at this time. Treasure Coast keeps working with the town and the town council even prior to my arrival to modify the scope to meet the expectations of town council and to lead to development of a final work product that everyone finds acceptable. They haven't added additional fees for any of these additional sessions that they've committed to do based on town council request. So there's no addendum to the contract at this point. If town council is directing that we draft another contract and stop Treasure Coast's work in progress, stop with the public engagement, and just wait until another contract is brought back to town council for consideration, then I would need to hear that from a majority of council. I would recommend against it simply because we have a collaborative partner, we have a scope, we're getting things added that weren't in the original contract, and that's not going to change the payment terms and conditions that we originally agreed to. So we're getting added value at no increased cost. And that doesn't typically translate into a new contract, obviously a new timeline. And we've talked to Treasure Coast about that, and I think the response that was provided just as recently as last week was we're in the middle of working on fleshing out what that schedule looks like based on a number of factors, including the timeline that Polco, for instance, if we go with Polco, would need to complete a survey, because the completion of that survey determines when Treasure Coast can conduct their meetings. So we don't have all those answers fleshed out, but we'll certainly share the timeline. And even the timeline would not, in and of itself, necessitate a contract revision as much as it would sharing the information about what the new timeline is. So I'll await direction from council.
Yeah, and I think Treasure Coast heard loud and clear that we weren't happy with that last work in progress, you know, proposal that they came forward with. And they've been very willing to work with the town, very accepting and adaptable to the council's requests. So if they're continuing to do that, I, at the same price, until they tell us different, and they're accepting what council is asking them to do, which is what they did at the last meeting when we had the work session. They took all the information, they went back with it, and they're starting to put together appointments with C.O.T. and the rest of the items that we recommended that they do. So I think, I don't know if we have to go to them with a new contract. If something changes, then we can make note of that and make sure that Rob's aware that he should do that if anything changes as far as they want to add price or add to the cost of the current contracts. John, what's your opinion?
My opinion is the contract's pretty complicated, and it changed, the scope changed from the original scope. I'm not sure what it changed to. And I would request the town manager to give us an update at our last meeting and explain it in a little more detail.
And an update on what changed in the contract is what you're wanting from Rob right now?
The contract, scope, cost, schedule, where we stand.
Just an update on that. Okay, at the next meeting, October 1st, you're asking for that, John, just so we know?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Diana, do you have any more?
I would just consensus for John's request, if we're gathering consensus.
Okay, Mary Ann?
I just would like.
Closer to the microphone.
Pull your microphone.
I would like to emphasize that both the mayor and I did not vote for engaging this company. And it was both councilors Halpern and Davis did. And now they are the ones who mostly criticize or change or want to do this to the scope. So I'm just, I don't have any, anything anymore to say. I, they want, they hired them, they don't like it, they want to change it, they discussed. So, be it.
All right, thank you, DeeDee.
We hired the master plan consultant with a three-to-two vote, I assume?
Yeah.
And who was the third? And so you're blaming us for the master plan? Is that what you are? You're blaming us for the master plan?
Let's.
You have no.
One guy, just a second, guys. Can we just go on with your feeling on the contract, DeeDee? Please.
I would defer to the town attorney regarding what we need to do with the contract. If you think from a legal standpoint, we need to amend the contract to include any extras, then I would defer to the legal counsel. I'm not a lawyer.
Generally, if you change the scope and they're going to charge you more money, then you go ahead and revise the contract. But apparently, they're doing, according to what the manager said, they're doing all this extra work under the original scope. So I don't see the need to amend the contract. And as the manager also said, we, I believe it's task based on the deliverables and the payments. And so the next deliverable, I guess, is the draft master plan, so there's no payment. So I don't really see a need for any revision at this point.
All right, any other questions? Do you still want to go forward with pursuing this, DeeDee? Because they wouldn't, I'm fine doing what the town manager said. Mary Ann, we need a consensus on this so we can get moving forward.
I'm fine with it.
And DeeDee?
I want this to advance and come to a conclusion, which is the best for all of us.
And it doesn't stop, Rob, for you bringing the contract on October 1st and just letting everyone see it?
Correct. I'm fully prepared to update town council on this, the agreement and what's going on, and hopefully we can have some of these questions answered following discussion of the survey that will flesh out the actual proposed timeline moving forward as well.
Is that good? Diana, do you have any other questions, then?
No.
All right, John, any questions about the budget? Besides that one? I am fine. We've, this is the end of our budget session. But Emily, I'd like to thank you for all your support, because I know you're on there during the budget season. And for you and Courtney's hard work in the finance department, we appreciate it.
We do need two motions made. The first one is for Resolution 2025-14, which is setting the millage tax rate.
Right, so I was going to, let me go ahead and read that one, and then you can do a motion and a vote. A resolution, the Town Council of Towns, Juneau Beach, Florida, adopting the final millage rate levying of ad valorem taxes for Palm Beach County, it's kind of a weird phraseology, but for fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 2025-14, setting the millage rate at 1.8195 mils, which is 5.67% above the rollback rate of 1.7219 mils.
I second.
All right, roll call.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Then I need a motion to approve the tentative annual budget.
All right, let me just read that one, one second.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. A resolution, the Town Council of Towns, Juneau Beach, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-15, adopting the 2025, 2026 annual budget of $10,645,492.
I second it.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
All right, item 10, renovation of the Dune Walkover structure and drainage improvements. And Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. There were three contractors that participated in the RFP to renovate the Dune Walkover, otherwise known as JB Zero. The evaluation committee evaluated each one of the proposals that was submitted based on the criteria set forth in the proposal package. The contractors are listed as underwater engineering solutions, Ferrera Construction, and Hart Cell. The town council had requested that the additional bench seating area be an optional line item, so pricing for that is listed as a deduction should it be eliminated by the town council. It should be noted that the project was estimated at $250,000. $150,000 comes from the FERUP grant and $100,000, excuse me, did I say $150,000? $150,000 from the FERUP grant and $100,000 from the one-cent SRTAX. This was budgeted utilizing this dollar amount. The budget for fiscal year 25, 26 is $210,000, because last year we spent $40,000 on engineering. The additional $96,361 to complete the project would come from the one-cent SRTAX. Staff makes a recommendation that the town council consider the motion to award the contract for services to renovate the Donald Ross Dune Walkover and improve the drainage at JB Zero to underwater engineering solutions, not to exceed $346,361, which includes the base bid of $314,874 plus 10% contingency with the additional $96,361 to come from the one-cent SRTAX fund. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm going to go to public comment first, and then we can start council discussion.
Siobhan O'Donnell?
Yes, I know that you recommended underwater. Is that what they're called?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, this might not be a comment that's needed, then. But one of the bidders on the job is a, it's a company, Ferrera Construction, owned by a board member on Peggy Wheeler's Police Foundation, a private corporation that will not open their books and tell us where the money comes from that goes to the police. So I would ask that Peggy Wheeler recuse herself if it comes down to any vote on Ferrera Construction, Inc. Thank you.
Those are all the comments I received on this item.
All right, I, my husband has passed away. He's no longer on the board, and I am not on the board of the Police Foundation, so I, there's no, it's not necessary for me to recuse myself whatsoever, right, Lynn? Just want to make sure that's clear.
That's correct, but it's not what's being recommended, anyway.
Right, okay, thank you. Is that all the public comments?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, let's go ahead and have council discussion. John, I can start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on the budget. Do we have an engineer's estimate of the anticipated cost for the project?
The estimated cost was $250,000.
That was the initial budget before the design started, but do we have a cost estimate from the engineer or an opinion of probable cost after the design was completed?
No.
I don't believe we do.
You're correct. We do not.
Okay, so the total cost of this is quite a bit more than the original estimated cost of $250,000. I have no problem with that in itself, because a lot of things happen between initial project scope and the final design, because it can follow a long and winding path from the initial ideas to where it ends up. And we all understand that. But I think it would be beneficial to the evaluation committee to have an engineer's estimate for future projects so that they can compare what the bidders bid at compared to what the engineer thinks about the worth, the project is worth. And that's my only comment, since we don't have that, we have really nothing to compare it to. We do know that the three bidders were relatively close in price. And we do know the evaluation committee did their due diligence and analyzed those bids. So I have no other questions or comments.
If I may, address your comment. The town's engineering team is well aware of our careful approach to budgeting. When the engineers provide a cost estimate for their services, the figures are precise. Therefore, any additional meetings they are required to attend or design modifications to the project result in additional fees to the town. In 2023, the engineering team initially proposed a budget of $250,000 for this renovation project. However, several factors have made this site very unique. There's no other beach access point which features a drainage system, making this the first of its kind in the town, potentially in this entire region. The extensive presence of the sea grapes in this area complicate both the construction of the base and the substructure and the necessity to protect the canopy. Furthermore, a certified arborist must be engaged by the general contractor during construction, adding to the cost of the project. This project site is also unique in that we have never needed to have a Palm Beach County right-of-way permit, which requires maintenance of traffic. The cost of incorporating a new shower feature into the structure also contributed to the overall expense. There were numerous unique factors associated with this renovation project, making it challenging to assign a precise dollar amount. Furthermore, the budget was established two years ago. Furthermore, the budget was established two years ago for the application process for the FERDAP grant. The cost of materials and labor have significantly been altered within this timeframe. With three contractors participating in the process and their proposals demonstrating strong competitiveness, we can conclude that the current rate represents a fair market value. Thank you. One other thing, if I may. Isaac Minger and Associates is the lead engineer for our team, and they had indicated that they would, they don't like to provide hard numbers because then they are held to that, and it can be very difficult, especially since the design didn't take place until we had an actual topographical survey and we could see what we were dealing with. And as I mentioned, this was two years ago when we started the budget process. Isaac Minger would have been able to provide us with that had we asked for it for an additional $5,000, which is about a 26% increase of engineering fees for their design services. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
I, I agree with John that after design, engineering estimate would be helpful. I am very happy that you got three bids. I think that's great. And, and I appreciate the review process that you went through and providing all that information. And I'm also glad that the sea grapes are being maintained, and that's part of the contract. Thanks.
Mary Ann?
I don't see anything wrong with it. I understand very well that within two years, the costs are going up. And I have a concern. I would like this project finished as soon as possible because when I looked at this access, it is kind of dangerous to some people walking down there, or hazardous, I should say. So, you know, I don't want anybody to fall or get hurt and sue our town. I seem to have always an obsession with getting sued for certain things. So I would like to always go the safe road and be financially, fiscally responsible for the town. So I think it's good. Thank you.
And to your, to your point, this will be a very quick process. This project, the start date is November 1st, which is the end of turtle nesting season, and they must complete everything before March 1st, which is the beginning of turtle nesting season. So the window for construction is very small.
Okay. Oh, I just remember, didn't we in the beginning have like a slope, a continuous slope? And then there was a discussion about the bench, that we had to have a slope, then a flat surface, another slope? Now, what is, this is the one with the flat surface?
So the engineer revised the drawings.
Yeah.
The drawings were submitted for bid, including the bench. So he designed it in a way that accommodated that additional bench seating area. If you choose to not have the bench seating area, I indicate on here, there's a small credit where we eliminate the bench and you save a few dollars.
Yeah, but we still have that
Yes.
flat service that we wouldn't have needed if we hadn't introduced the bench.
You still would, you still would need it because there is such a drastic grade change out there. From the sidewalk to the bottom of the, the dune is about a 15-foot drop.
Okay.
So it was just some modifications in the engineering to accommodate the, the bench at that area, but we still had that, the, the drop in the walkway.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
DeeDee?
I'll make a motion to award the contract for services to renovate the Donald Ross Dune Walkover at JB Zero and improve the drainage, award the contract to underwater engineering solutions in the amount not to exceed $346,361,000, which includes a base bid of $314,874 plus a 10% contingency with the additional $96,361 to come from the 1-cent surtax fund.
I second it.
All right. More discussion. I, I didn't have a chance to say a few things. I know when we originally started this, David Dias' time period, we didn't think we could even get $150,000 and, and find, you know, use all that money. So it is, you know, a little bit shocking to see the amount and how much it's gone up to. To me, I, I'm fine. You know, we can go ahead and vote on the motion. And the bench, is everybody okay keeping the bench in?
It's just a small amount.
Or nay? We're gonna include the bench? John?
Yes.
Okay. DeeDee?
It's just a small amount of money.
Right. For that company.
And we want people to be able to sleep at night there.
And then, just so everybody knows, and, and for the record, the, the two companies that came in the closest were Ferrari Construction and Underwater. Ferrari Construction is $21,349 less expensive. They would probably do a fine job. In the summary tab, tabulation, like I said, they're, they were very close in what they look at in that tabulation is qualifications, background and experience of firm, references, date of commencement and completion, and the price. So just for the record, we, we want to go ahead and go with the higher-priced firm, right? And not save the $21,000.
Staff's assessment was that underwater engineering solutions would be the better provider of the services, and that's why I'm going with underwater engineering solutions.
Okay. Mary Ann, do you have any comment on that?
No.
All right. Diana?
I'd also go staff recommendation.
Okay. John?
Yeah, staff recommendation.
Okay. Then I need a roll call, please.
We have a motion, yeah.
Yes.
We had a motion.
In a second. We do. We're good.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're gonna jump. Thank you, Andrea. Now we're gonna jump to council discussion on site plan and appearance review for single-family homes. And Frank, do you want to go ahead and start us off on this?
Good evening, Council. This item is a continuation from the August 28 meeting that we had here discussing the appearance review for single-family homes. In the memorandum that was provided to you, you have two attachments, one which includes the memorandum from Town Attorney Rubin dated July 21 regarding the Senate Bill 180 and its impact on the appearance review harmony standards for single-family dwellings. As well, you have the staff memorandum that is dated August 26, which is the appearance reviews for single-family dwellings, response to town council. Staff has provided a recommendation, as this is a continuation from our previous three or four meetings, which is that staff recommends that the town council proceed with option one, as outlined in the July 21, 2025 memorandum, page six. Continue with the direction provided in May to the extent not preempted by Senate Bill 180 and revert to base zoning. Staff further recommends proceeding with the consensus items identified at the September 8, 2025 meeting, which is highlighted in the memorandum in red. Staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. We're ready for public comments.
Larry Sorsby?
I've asked Caitlin to distribute some handouts to the, the council and the diocese. And if anyone's interested in the audience, we'll have some for you as well. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Larry Sorsby, and I'm here tonight to urge you to repeal ordinance 780 and restore the harmony codes that guided Juneau Beach fairly and effectively for more than three decades. The harmony codes enacted in 1992 were built on three principles: fairness, simplicity, and certainty. They treated all homeowners equally, provided clear standards, and protected property rights while preserving the character of the town. Ordinance 780 dismantled that foundation. It replaced objective guidelines with vague, subjective rulings by town staff and the planning and zoning board without codified metrics to ensure consistent enforcement. The result is confusing for property owners, uncertainty for buyers, and perilous for staff. In Florida, a planning and zoning director cannot apply purely subjective restrictions on single-family homes or any other land use category. Their role is to enforce objective standards adopted by ordinance in the town's Land Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, or overlay districts. Florida statutes 163.3202 and 163.3194 require that all restrictions be grounded in adopted ordinances or codes. Courts have consistently struck down subjective or arbitrary land use controls as unlawful. Ordinance 780, by relying on subjective interpretations, places Juneau Beach on legally shaky ground and exposes the town to costly litigation. Just as three council members have since admitted they did not fully understand the sweeping impact of ordinance 780 when they voted for it, the public was never given a fair opportunity to comment or grasp its consequences either. Residents believed that it was simply a definition of harmony, not drastic changes to their property rights. That lack of transparency undermines trust in the process. This uncertainty doesn't just frustrate residents, it threatens property values and financial security. For many in Juneau Beach, their home is their largest asset, relied upon for retirement, medical expenses, or family inheritance. When government overreach reduces home values, it directly harms the people who built this community. Now, two of the very council members who support ordinance 780, Ms. Hostin Wheeler, have recognized the harm in wanting repealed, and another has admitted she did not understand what she was voting for. That speaks volumes. So I ask you, why keep a policy that restricts property rights, lowers home values, and exposes our town to lawsuits, especially when its own architects now oppose it? And the public never had a fair chance to weigh in? I'll finish.
30 seconds.
Over 170 residents have signed a petition asking you to rescind ordinance 780. Repealing it is not a step backwards. It is a return to the principles that made Juneau Beach a model of thoughtful, balanced government. It is a reaffirmation of fairness, simplicity, and certainty. Let's restore the harmony codes. Let's restore trust and fairness, and let's protect rights and financial security of every homeowner in Juneau Beach. Thank you.
John Stelludo?
Hi, John.
Hi, John Stelludo, 401 Sunset Way. I don't know if I can follow that. Pretty much put it all together. But basically, what I've been saying from the beginning is we didn't understand this 780. We didn't want it when we did understand it. And you guys never, never asked the 314 houses that this is affecting, you know, ask them if we wanted it. And, and like we said, we, we've, we've come around with a petition. We didn't get to finish the petition, but you, you got close to 200 out of 314 houses. Come on, that's the majority right there. But you guys just want to push this through. Have you ever been bullied? You all went to school. You've been bullied. Well, that's how I feel. And that's how the people of Juneau Beach feel. We feel bullied. I bought this property. I knew it was a great spot. I knew I could see the lake. I could see the ocean if I could afford to go up. Unfortunately, I, I couldn't afford to do it. But I want those same rights, just in case I come into some money. Or I want to sell it, and I can sell it for what I bought it for, not a reduction. And I think someone else spoke before me, said that I was misinformed. I'm not misinformed. I'm gonna lose square footage on the second level. And you guys are gonna make this town look like an HOA. I taught kids to be creative and think outside the box. You know, what we're trying to do now is squeeze us in, make us all look the same? Like I say, people say, keep Juneau Beach, Juneau Beach. Well, keeping Juneau Beach, Juneau Beach is keeping it the same codes, the base codes we had that built, the eclectiveness, the creativeness of our town. And I'm tired of being bullied, and you guys need to stop. Do not codify 780. Talk to the people. Ask us what we want. Because you don't do what we want. There's many other items I've brought forward over 40 years, and the town has done nothing. This is a real stab in the back to us little homeowners that, like you said, is our main asset. And we need that money. We need those homes. We need the square footage. Do not take that away from us. Thank you.
Anne Bossow?
Anne Bossow, 765 Hibiscus Avenue. When each of us bought our houses, anyone who has a single-family home, zoning was in place. The codes were there. You could build. There was, there's a side setback, there's a rear, front setbacks, and there were height requirements. Very, for years, very few people tore down houses and started and rebuilt. But when we, when we all bought, the possibility was there. The zoning was in place. That possibility has now become a probability. Juneau has been discovered. As Cynthia Fraser pointed out, it's, this has been going on since the 60s. There are growth spurts, there are real estate spurts, and Juneau has been discovered. What this ordinance does is takes away these rights, as John Stelludo said, from the very beginning that we have had since each of us purchased our properties. Whether you choose to do it or not is your choice, but y'all should not be able to take the choice away from us. Pretty much, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marsha Wool?
She on Zoom? No.
Siobhan O'Donnell?
Somebody left their tablet. Oh, you want to leave it there? Okay. Okay. I would like to ask Diana if she can expound on the concept of downzoning, which she took upon herself to research, that it's effectively, it has been achieved effectively in other towns where they control rampant growth. Because I, it's a difficult subject because people want what they want, what they had when they bought it. But things do change. There are times when people see a town going in the wrong direction because I would bet you almost everybody who moved here, moved here because it wasn't a Fort Lauderdale. It wasn't a Boca Raton. It wasn't a Hallandale. It was a Juneau Beach. It was laid-back beach town. And with the direction we're going, with the developers coming in, with rabid pounding of their fists, and real estate brokers wanting to make their commission, it's very hard, you know, to control. It takes will on council. Unfortunately, we have a developer as the mayor, and we have her sidekick who sends out dishonest newsletters that are shocking, really, and who should be fired for having extreme insubordination, calling a council member a liar. That was just, you should be gone, Mr. Cole. You shouldn't be here. You, you work for this, this council. They don't work for you. You work for them. And, but I would ask Diana to please expound on that because I talked with John Stelludo at length the other day, and I, I feel your pain, John. But John had a great idea, and that was, what if you took away his square footage because you had to wedding cake the top story of his home? But what if you had given John a way to put a mother, mother-in-law suite with a little kitchen and bathroom? Give him some square footage that he's losing. You know, there's probably ways, as Will says, let's work together. Let's harmonize. And so I would ask, I just think that Diana had a great idea to look at where it has worked in other towns. Thank you.
Red Dunn?
Red Dunn, Sunset Way. Without our existing harmony codes in place to review the new construction in context, staff cannot enforce the, all they can do with a developer would be to suggest that they follow they follow our new standard book. So I, I feel like it's unreasonable to think that maybe there will be some developers that will actually care enough to work with our staff, but to think that they're all going to police themselves and follow this standard book that, that the council has approved and moving forward with, I don't think it's realistic. And so I, I stand up here asking that we look for a way to fix what we've got, not get rid of it, because if we get rid of it, then we've, we've gotten, we've lost it all. We can't, developers, they don't have, they can, but they don't have to follow the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
No other comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start council discussion. I know there's been something sent to council, and perhaps, John, I will start with you on this, and let you go ahead and begin the item, because I know you sent us a proposed new ordinance section, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought copies for anyone who didn't get my earlier email.
Could I get another one, John?
Sure. I got about a dozen here, if anybody, you know, wants to.
One is good.
You want one?
Thank you. I've got one.
Want one?
Yeah, I have the next.
Okay. So if anybody wants one, they're up here. Anyways, what I wanted to say is, it's very important that we keep appearance review in our code of single-family homes. But, but I, I don't appreciate the clapping, but there's always a button. Because of the state laws, we need to take some things out of our code, because Governor DeSantis and the Florida Legislature prohibited us from enforcing architectural standards on single-family homes a few years ago. So I proposed a new code section just for single-family homes, and I'd like to explain the code changes that I proposed to deal with this appearance review and harmony issue as it relates to single-family homes that are not in a planned unit development. Here are five things that these suggestions do. Number one, it moves single-family home criteria to a new section to make them easier to understand. Two, it removes site plan review for these single-family homes. Three, it keeps appearance review. Four, it removes appearance review criteria that are prohibited by state law. And five, it institutes a less confrontational plan review process that helps applicants to better achieve harmony between their project and the neighborhood. Without reading the entire thing, which I could, that's my proposal, and I hope we can agree on that or modify it as we need to, to put this behind us.
So, so John, since we've.
Do you have copies of this? No, no, I have the copies that you sent out, but the copy of what you read right now, the five steps.
So, John, since we just received this today, I'm going to let, let you and Frank have a little conversation about it, and kind of talk about what it is that you're adding, because I was a little confused when I saw it, so. So, John, go ahead and, and talk to Frank a little bit about the code itself. You've got, the first page that you've given us is, that's not from the code, is it? It's just your appearance review for single-family detached.
The first two pages are the proposed new, new section, and that is for just single-family homes that are detached, detached, single-family homes that are not within an approved planned unit development.
Okay, Frank.
That's the first two pages. The other pages suggested what to do with the rest of the section. It's four pages, and what it basically does is take single-family home language out of that section.
It cleans up the current code. Correct.
Did you want to say something first?
At the time, I was just going to confirm with Frank whether he had the opportunity to review this yet, and if he had thoughts to share, and it seems like you have, and you'd.
Yes, yes, thank you, and I do appreciate you sharing this with us this morning, so that, that gave me an opportunity to review it. It won't be a detailed review, but it is a review. From what I gather, and I'm, I'm looking at the first two pages with the proposed new language, is that when we look at harmony and what we've been discussing with the criteria of harmony, the two main components are mass and bulk. That's what, that's what dictates the size of the home. The proposed language, I don't believe it actually achieves the goal that were, you know, that was discussed back in 2023, which is making the home smaller. Not saying that, that, you know, it's not a good skeleton that we can't work on, but it is saying things like shall not imply that buildings are larger, that must have greater setbacks, lower maximum height, but in the next sentence, it's actually saying that you have to achieve harmony through the same consideration of those criterias. So that it, for, for somebody like myself that's going to be reviewing plans, that's Also, the same language still has a lot of the components that talk about architectural style, so we would have to clean those up as well. We would have to modify it, we would have to remove things such as material, roof pitch, architectural style, design color from the proposed language. And the last comment that I have is regarding the voluntary review of the design guideline. Anything can be done voluntarily, as we discussed in our previous meeting with the green boxes and the red boxes. The language would have to be removed, we would have to remove the shall adhere to type of language from there, and strictly just say that it is a voluntary type of review made by staff, which in this case, that, that's pretty much what we were doing, or that's what staff was recommending when we discussed all those options that we brought to you on August. So, so I, I don't believe that the proposed language achieves that goal in keeping harmony with the review process. It puts it back on staff with metrics, asking us to do metrics, because we still have to achieve harmony. What is harmony, setbacks, scale, proportion, you know, all these other nine things in there, that's still in the definition, without using metrics, without being able to codify metrics, you're putting us in the same place that we are today.
Could, could I ask you what you're talking about as far as the goal? You have a, a concept in your, what you're saying about the goal of harmony is what?
Well, back in 2023, when we discussed this.
I wasn't here in 2023, so.
Back in 20, I'm explaining, back in 2023, when this was discussed, it was the supersize of the homes. That's why the preponderance language was including, was included in, in there. The mass and bulk were the bigger parts of that discussion. You can see that in our memorandum, we talk about it, we, that whole table that we provide to the Planning and Zoning Board talks about the size of the home. The metrics that staff was using to, to give the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Board, if you look at the, you know, our go, no-go, our purple boxes and all of that, the first two are regarding mass and bulk. If for some reason one of those was a no, then we go look into the other, into the other definitions of harmony, scale, landscape, materials, and so on. So just by stating that, the main focus was mass and bulk. And, and that, that was shown on our memorandums, and it was discussed, you know, a few years back.
Okay, so I don't understand your issue with this ordinance, because I, I didn't mention mass, bulk, or smaller houses.
But you still kept that in there.
Kept what in?
The, the language of harmony.
I kept harmony language in there. I didn't put anything about making smaller houses in there, Frank. Where, where do you see that?
I can't, I'm, I'm not, so when you keep harmony in there, and we have a definition for what harmony is.
I, I, I'm not familiar with that definition at all. You're telling me the definition of harmony is a smaller house?
No, it's, it's not, I did not say that. Right. So harmony, we have it codified in the code, chapter 34 dash four.
Right.
It has a definition, and it's very similar, it's very similar to what's in your number one. You know, that for the concept of harmony, building shall not have, I'm sorry, harmony can be achieved through the proper consideration of setback, scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, orientation, site planning, and landscaping. That is the language that you have in there.
Right.
That was the same language that we currently have in our code.
Right.
Correct. So that language remains in there, which means that if it's codified the way that it is, I have to abide by that. So I have to use it as my review when I do the homes, when, when I do the, the ARB package. That, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Right.
Correct.
You're assuming that says it has to be a smaller house. Isn't that what you're saying?
The focus that we had when this came was the size of the homes. Again.
You're, you're talking about some discussions that happened when 780 was, was, was approved by council, I think, right? Or the one before that, or whatever?
It, it's the same thing that we've been doing for every single ARB. If, if, again, the memorandum is very clear in there that the majority of the discussions that we have are about mass and bulk.
Yes.
Correct?
But not mass and bulk compared to something else in the next-door house, the ones in the neighborhood that I could see.
Compared, the, the table includes all the homes within 300 feet with the same zoning district, so that's what we're comparing it to. And, and it gives you an average, it gives you the FAR, it gives you a range, lowest, the highest. And at the May 2nd workshop, we went step by step on how staff does the review of that, and we provided you our little chart that says if they're within twice the average and within the range, we were saying, yes, you are going to get recommendation of approval from staff. What the Planning and Zoning Board does, that's up to them. If one of those were not met, then we go into the purple boxes, which then has us look at the other definitions of harmony, landscape, scale, proportion, and so on. So that was, that was the, the package. I, I don't know how many pages it was, but that, that's the four-hour workshop that we had on May 2nd. That, that's what staff was explaining at that time.
Well, so that, I guess, I think what you're saying, there's a, there's a conflict between the way the staff has been applying the code compared to what I suggested.
What, what I'm saying is that since you still have the definition of harmony in there, and then we've been told by legal counsel that we cannot use metrics, and we cannot codify metrics, we're in the same place that we were before. Meaning that I cannot, per legal counsel, use metrics for harmony.
You're just losing me on where the idea that harmony has something to do with making a house smaller. I'm just not getting that. I know there was a lot of discussion at the time by letting, making houses smaller, but I don't, I don't see where this existing code in harmony says that the house has to be smaller than another house, or all the houses, or the average of a house.
It may not say that.
Right.
It doesn't. But again, our memorandum that we provided on August as well, we're talking about supersizing homes, McMansions.
Yeah.
That was the discussion, correct?
Right.
Right. So when council asked us to look at all the other options, and, and I, I could read it, was to stop McMansions. Slow them down, slow down growth. That was the discussion.
And which, when you're saying the August, the 12th?
At the August meeting, when staff provided the appearance review of single-family dwellings response to town council, that's the one that discusses all the options that are red and green and, and yellow.
Right.
And even the meeting before that, when staff did the review and provided you just 14 different options in there, we talked about, staff benchmarked other municipalities to find out what controls have been implemented to regulate supersized houses, these included, and then you have a list of them.
Right. I, I see that you, you looked at other towns, you, you looked at all the regulations that we voted on, which ones we were going to adopt.
We, we gave a recommendation, correct?
Right, and we, and we voted on a few of the green ones.
Correct.
Was there any of those green ones that said that house had to be smaller?
If we're talking about reducing setbacks, if we're talking about floor area limits, and we're saying.
You didn't vote in any of those, we voted those down.
No, you did vote for it, and then it, because of Senate Bill 180, that got taken back.
No, we, we voted in May for it, yes. We didn't, in the August meeting with the red, the 22 items, that some were red, some were green, one was yellow.
That, that is correct, but there was a vote on that, and that's what was part of the memorandum, because this is a continuation of, I believe, the May 2nd meeting, and then we just happened to have a meeting every month thereafter.
I, I think we're talking past each other, but I, I didn't intend to put anything in this that would mandate a smaller house.
Go ahead, Frank.
Frank, can I ask you a quick question? Looking at the language in number one, it says harmony can be achieved through the proper consideration of setback, scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, so on and so forth, which has been the focus of this conversation, I believe. If you do not have the ability to utilize architectural review standards, design elements, or metrics, do you believe that you can conduct a proper plan review and make a, a go/no-go decision based just on these words?
No, we, we could not, it, it cannot be consistent. Senate Bill 180, the fact that architect, building design elements are, we're not allowed to even look at materials, roof types for single-family and two families, it, it pretty much handcuffs us in any type of review.
Is that tied to the rationale for having made the staff recommendation associated with Attorney Rubin's option number one with the addition of the items in green that we thought might, you know, further induce people to do the right thing when it comes to contextual fit?
Correct, because even with that option, yes, we, we do go back to base zoning, but for the things that we can do with harmony, or appearance, I should say, for appearance, although they're voluntary recommendations to the property owners, developers, whoever they may be, there's still options that they can abide by, and it would still be an effort to keep harmony in the code. It is voluntary, so we wouldn't know if, if, you know, somebody's willing to give up their, their square footage for landscaping or what it may be. But yes, op, option one is, is the one that we're looking, that staff is recommending.
Just for clarification, John is saying just use that definition, do not go backwards, go forward, and if that definition is the problem, if you have that definition in there, bulk, scale, mass, proportion, then you have to look at that. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying? Because I'm.
It, it is currently defined, Len, correct me here, if I have a definition, and they're saying that this house has to meet harmony, which incorporates all these components, and I have a definition for it, when I do my review, that's what I have to use.
Your review has to be based on the code language that exists, correct?
Such as, correct.
And, and when we first started this, when this definition was approved, council approved the definition, we did not discuss any metrics at that time. I even said in that meeting that, well, this is just a definition, and it won't affect anything, and no one said a word. So based on the fact that we approved it at that time, and there was no metrics, there was no indication that single-family homes would be affected, you know, I understand we didn't have that information, but using that definition is the problem. It needs to go out of the, the single-family homes, correct, Frank? Or Len?
I mean, the definition can stay for other projects, multifamily projects, townhome projects, it, it, we just cannot, we can actually even use it for two families. The only thing that we can't use for two families and single families is architecture. So the definition can stay there, it just can't be used for single families, and when, when we're talking about building design. And when, when we're talking about, um, building design elements. Because building design elements is only for single families and two families. But harmony or appearance can be done for multifamily projects.
Could I just clarify one thing and then maybe let the other council members talk? The set, the second sentence in this, when I, my proposal to leave the words is of a depth, design in proportion, which enhances is in harmony with the area. Second sentence is the concept of harmony shall not imply that buildings must look alike or be the same style. But the third sentence is for applications received prior to October two thousand twenty-seven, the concept of harmony shall not imply that buildings must have greater setbacks, lower maximum heights, smaller tower areas, smaller maximum building dimensions, greater landscaping area requirements or smaller maximum coverages than those listed in the district regulations RS one through RS five. So specifically, I'm saying harmony is not have anything to do with making the houses smaller by any of those metrics.
But the very next paragraph, you're saying harmony can be achieved through the proper consideration of setback scale.
Yes, it can.
And so on.
But that's, I believe that's a true statement.
Right. But even, even, and, and Len can speak about some, putting something in the code for a future date, October twenty twenty-seven. But if we're not for the applications received prior to October twenty twenty-seven, the concept of harmony shall not imply that, you know, you have to have that. The language added in there, then it's not necessary. Because then we're, what we're doing is that we're following base zoning.
Not strictly following base zoning. I get it, the, the outlines is base zoning.
And then my question would be then, where do I, where do I go? As staff?
They, they-
For my interpretation, you know?
Where do you go?
Right, right, exactly. Like, so what am I supposed to review if I can't follow metrics? I can't set metrics.
Right.
Right? And can't codify them.
You want to know what the review process is, what for reviewing an application?
Well, yes, because now we, we want to talk about it right now. Because then we don't want to come back a few years later and say that, hey, they know what-
You, you have a process where they fill out an application, they give you data. They list the harmony components at each applicant, how their, their project fits in harmony with the area on their application. Okay? And you review all that. And then you give them feedback. Right? And you're going to give them feedback on things like whether you agree with their interpretation of harmony or you disagree. And then you have a record of it. You agree that, um, on the, on the base zoning things, you know, the, the, the height setbacks and, you know, things like that. And you, and, and the way I worded it, staff review followed by notification of application deficiencies and non-binding comments regarding harmony criteria.
So my concern-
Non-binding comments on harmony criteria using professional judgment of you or Stephen, whoever does it. For good public purpose, because part of the reason people, we have building codes and fees is people are getting a benefit. They're going to get the benefit of your knowledge, of Stephen's knowledge on their project, your professional opinion, how things, the history of architecture features in town, how things, if you get someone that's born in a foreign country and they have an architect from Siberia, you could say, you know, this isn't really going to fly when you try to sell your house. They may not know that. So giving those the background from your review is very valuable, even if you can't mandate it. I think you're associating my idea of giving constructive comments with some mandating changes to their plans.
The, the comments or the deficiencies that staff is to provide, what are those going to be based on the fact that I, I, again, I cannot use metrics? The only thing that I have in my code right now is base zoning, which tells us what the maximum square footage for the lock coverage is, maximum height, setbacks restrictions, landscape open space. Right? Those comments that I, the comments that I provided before and the comments that we have provided before when we do the ARB are based on the metrics that we were using, that we showed here at the May second workshop. Again, I don't have those metrics. I'm not supposed to be using those metrics. Right? So, so what comments am I supposed to provide to somebody?
The fee, whether do you have enough sufficient number of copies? The elevator shafts hiding mechanical equipment, uh, the other things, the onsite structures and accessory features. Any buildings over forty feet in height appearing more horizontal and vertical. You know, um, locate and design mechanical equipment with architectural treatments so the noise and other negative impact is minimized.
Those things-
Those things would be deficiencies that need to be corrected. Things on harmony, whether it fits in, whether it's a nice color, if it's a nice shape. Point them out, but you can't, go ahead and point them out. It doesn't hurt anything.
You're saying color. The state statute clearly states that I cannot do anything building design elements and color is included in that.
No, it, you can, you can't, but you can't make them redesign their house because of that. You certainly could talk about the color, the mass, the bulk and how it fits in with the community and give them your opinion. Not, that's why it says non-binding in my, that's why I put the word non-binding in there. Just, just to clear that up.
Len, uh, if I could ask you a question, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Vice Mayor Calligan. It sounds like Vice Mayor Calligan would like to make most of this voluntary. In other words, non-binding, because if it's non-binding, it's voluntary compliance. If all of these words such as harmony can be achieved through the proper consideration of setback scale, mass bulk proportion, so on and so forth, become non-binding, then staff could comment on them. The comments would be non-binding. We could not deny a permit if someone failed to comply with those comments or, or, you know, choose any of them. So if, if what we're talking about is an option that makes, you know, the words there non-binding, that's a, a different conversation than what's laid out in ink here. So Len, if you were to take, um, Vice Mayor Calligan's language and make appearance review when it comes to single family homes, non-binding, and then staff prepare comments about what their thoughts are about, you know, architecture and the, design elements and anything else that they feel relevant, they could do that. But an applicant would not be bound to them and neither staff nor the PMZ could deny that application based on their failure to, you know, pick up on those requests. Is that accurate?
If they're non-binding, you cannot deny a, an appearance review application on that basis, correct?
So then the code would have to clearly indicate that they're non-binding to the applicant. So that way, when staff are administering this both in the near term and in outer years, they would know that this is voluntary compliance language, not mandatory zoning regulations that contribute to a pass fail determination.
Is that another question?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just saying this language here doesn't quite say that. So it would have to be changed to make-
And, and that-
The entirety of appearance review, non-binding and advisory only.
And, and that was really my question coming into this meeting, because I, when John distributed it, I read it. And that's, was actually going to be my question for John. So are you saying it's non-binding? Cause that's what it seems to say at the end, that it's non-binding. It's just, they're going to give their input. I just, but dialogue in this discourse you just had with Frank, you're sort of saying, we're going to still apply harmony. But then later on, it says it's non-binding. That, that's what I was confused about.
John, was, there was a question there for you.
Yeah, that was for you.
John, is it not, it's not you?
I'm sorry, I, I just didn't look at it as, as ambiguous. I tried to write it up as plainly as I could. The last sentence would be in the code that says staff review followed by notification of application deficiencies and non-binding comments concerning harmony criteria.
So you're saying they're non-binding, they're just staff's input to the applicant?
For the harmony criteria.
For the harmony.
Not for the whole appearance review.
No, I said just for the harmony, just for that one section.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to clear, it would be-
Hold on, hold on Diana, we're going to, I'll come to you in a second. I want, I want to make sure you're finished with Len and with Frank. And any other questions? Okay. Diana, go ahead.
I just wanted a clarification on what John just said, because there seemed to be some confusing. Appearance review has two parts. One part is architectural review and the other part is harmony. So I thought what you just said is that it would be non-binding for harmony, not for appearance. But you mean for-
Appearance.
For architecture and harmony, right?
I, I don't know what you mean by the two sections. I don't, I'm not-
The, the criteria itself is for appearance, which includes architecture and harmony.
Harmony. They're both components of appearance.
The current language right now has architecture as number one, harmony as number two. And then it includes the other components that you listed in there about the elevator shaft, the horizontal versus vertical and so on.
I think site plan is one and, and harmony is one. I don't know what you mean by, uh, architecture is one and harmony is number two. What, where's that coming from?
Thirty-four, one sixteen, three B one and three B two.
Right. So the current appearance review criteria, architecture is number one. Then harmony is number two. Then elevators and stairwell shafts, three, and then the onsite structures, four.
Right.
And then that horizontal, not vertical is five. Canic equipment, six.
I, I believe architecture is not on the table.
No.
That was-
I'm not-
Clearly stated that we cannot do that.
But for single family, right?
For single family.
Architecture off the table.
The response to that was continue with the pattern book.
Right. We can't require any architectural style. You can comment on it. And look, they can use architecture to make something fit in better, but we can't require any specific type of style, color, material, et cetera.
All right, Diana, you can continue.
Yes. Um, I'm not in favor of option one. I am in favor of option two and keeping our harmony review. The review of our existing codes for single family home, harmony's been our code for a really long time. That whole language about, um, design in proportion, which hap, which enhances the harmony of the area and the setback scale mass, those are existing codes. So we're not getting rid of existing codes. We're keeping our codes. This harmony review is actually keeping our codes. And the review of existing codes for single family homes began when our planning and zoning volunteer board said that they didn't want to make subjective decisions regarding appearance review, meaning the harmony reviews. And town council directed the staff after our May second workshop to improve the appearance review, the harmony criteria for easier application. I, and as far as, um, our goal and what we're trying to achieve here, harmony was trying to protect the property rights of existing homeowners and protect their quality of life. We've, uh, we have existing homeowners that have moved based on, um, large houses that were built next to them and made them feel overwhelmed. And new developers' property rights do not supersede our existing property owners. And, um, I was, Anne Bosso and Mr. Sorsby, the petition that they sent around the neighborhoods, it suggested that harmony takes away your property rights. Mayor Wheeler put it in our town newsletter that harmony takes away property rights. There's a lot of misinformation about these harmony reviews that have been in our code for a really long time. The question in, in the July twenty-first memo from Len Rubin, it gives us two options. One to go with, um, what's being called base zoning. That's at thirty-four dash two sixty-eight. That's the thirty-five percent lock coverage and setbacks. It results in homes that are point seven two to point seven four floor area ratio. These are huge houses, much bigger than the houses that we currently have in the neighborhood. And I can understand how that might be a boon for the real estate folks and their commissions, but I don't think it helps existing property owners. So Frank, I'll ask you, under the current harmony review that you illustrated in the May second workshop, that does have metrics and subjective criteria, how many homes have been turned down under these harmony reviews?
By staff, three of them. Single family homes and one being in the PUD, which is the seven hundreds. So we had the one in Neptune, the one in Diana and the one that was just-
But they all ultimately went forward, isn't that correct?
Again, staff only does a recommendation. So based on the metrics that we explained, staff recommended denial on those three homes.
Right.
And then the planning and zoning board kept the denial for the one on Neptune.
Neptune.
And approved the one on Diana and the one on Ocean Drive.
So there's only been one that's been denied based on the harmony metrics so far. It, without our existing codes, um, for, for new construction in context, staff can enforce reasonableness and it's unrealistic to believe that developers will police themselves. I think if we pass the two six, if we pass the thirty-four, two sixty-eight only, those three applications that we have now, everybody's going to come in for an amendment and ask for an additional two thousand square feet on their house. So the, we'd be leaving developers free to build in ways that ignore our existing comprehensive plan. And our existing comprehensive plan requirements require visual continuity and they require consistent neighborhood character. Harmony, these harmony codes are the only thing we have that provides for that for our neighborhoods. And so I think the solution is to go back to the root cause. And if the planning and zoning volunteer board members don't feel comfortable with the subjective reviews, that we should take it back to our professional planning and zoning board. Because you do these subjective reviews for single family homes, for commercial, for commercial mixed use, the big projects like Coretta and Pulte, um, in addition to single family homes. So it is clear that you can review these and have the, that you're capable of doing these reviews. And I have confidence that you are. But I don't think that we should get, throw our codes out and just let the developers decide what Juneau Beach looks like. We are working for the residents and, uh, the survey that I sent out, I had two hundred and fifty-two responses and ninety-seven percent believe that their property values are best maintained. And they're, the, by reviewing the size of new buildings and new construction in context. So I think that we should up, we should approve that three D GIS scene view and have staff do that for our new projects that are proposed. I have the May second, harmony review with the purple boxes that I handed out. I do have an amendment. Like John, I have an amendment that's, that's to this, the way that the staff is reviewing this. And, um, so I, I would celebrate the subjective nature and not go with the strict metrics. I believe that you should do the, um, you know, you should do the analysis of the three hundred square foot homes in context, you know, with the FAR and the sizes and go through that that you're currently doing. But the, but the questions would be test one, is a square foot and the FAR within the study area? Yes or no? Either one, you go to test two. And under test two, are the calculations less than double the average? If it is approved, if no, you go to test three. Are the calculations within ten to twenty percent of the largest structure? Yes is likely approved and no is probable denial and go to four. And four is the subjective test. Are there mitigating factors present to compensate such as setbacks, orientation, architectural feature? You know, or whatever you wanted to add to that setback for a second story or, or whatever that you think would help there. And then for, um, for the scale and the height, that was, uh, that was provided in May second. The test one, same as May second, or more than half, the structures in the three hundred foot study area, the same stories are higher. Yes, approved, no to go to number two. Test two, same as it, you had May second. Are, are the immediate adjacent structures, the same stories are higher? Yes, approved. And if no, go to test three. And in test three, bring in that site area building requirement, the thirty-four dash two sixty-eight. Is the scale within allowable limits of thirty-four, two sixty-eight? Yes, likely approved. Go to four, no probable denial. And then, so both of these would go to four and four are your mitigating factors. The orientation, architectural feature, setbacks, limit on a second floor area. So this would be our existing review that we've had for the last two years that we've had harmony. So it's not an issue under, under Senate Bill one eighty. It's, it's not an issue under Burt Harris, that's been around since nineteen ninety-five. And these harmony provisions have been in our code since then and we haven't had a case for that. It's allowed under the building design elements. The architectural review that's, um, been described as illegal by the town, even though the- even though the Lynn Rubin's memo, our legal memo, said that, um, that he could argue it either way. And so we could potentially continue to review architecture. But I know the council has voted a couple of times that we should just move on from that. But under the one sixty-three, thirty-two oh two, which is the section in the Florida statute that has some limitations on municipal governments reviewing building design elements, it specifically reserves to the municipalities, height, bulk, orientation. You know, it, it suggests that the municipalities would continue to do their harmony reviews in the specific language that's in the statute. So I, I reject that we can't do the, that we can't do the harmony reviews for the single family homes because of this, um, some limitations potentially on our architectural review. I, I believe, um, that as, as a town, that we can look at this as what the residents want and that we, the existing property owners do have rights. And I guess I'll ask the question to Lynn. You know, based on the Palm Beach cases where subjective criteria were upheld, if we have the existing metrics that we've had along with subjective criteria, could our staff continue those reviews?
Look, I, I suppose they could. We've heard repeatedly that staff's not comfortable doing it, which is why in that memo I said we should move to a design review board or appearance review board if we're going to enforce those subjective standards. But look, also, and it's all outlined in the memo, that, you know, there is a possibility of collateral attacks on all that stuff, on the ordinances themselves. Burt Harris would come into play because we did modify it. I don't know what you're, I know what you're saying, Diana, that, you know, from ninety-two, that harmony language was in there. But then we, we restricted it, restricted it, defined it, defined it. And that was all after ninety-five. So Burt Harris could apply to those. So it's, I mean, it goes back to like, we've had this debate many times about, about risk. So yeah, you could take the risk, um, and keep applying it and see if you get challenged. But the problem I'm hearing is that staff doesn't want to be the one to do it because they don't feel comfortable doing it without metrics, which we really, you, you can't read in metrics that don't exist. And, and we'll lose on that. So that, that has always been a little problematic, but you'd have to enforce the code as written, which is very subjective, except for maybe mass, which talks about the overall size and volume. I don't know how that's subjective, but all the others are talking about relativity and proportion to others and all that kind of stuff. But.
So for this, the guidance that, that the staff's been using for harmony and that was described in the PowerPoint, that was part of the May second, uh, workshop, can we continue applying those metrics as long as your final test is the subjective review?
Yeah. So that, and I, I, I was just looking at the memo because what I, what I said in the memo, I said, finally, while towns, while town staff, sorry, I can't read either, could continue to analyze the square footage and floor air ratio of structures within the comparison area when formulating its recommendations as to bulk, mass and scale, it should avoid the adoption of strict formulas and applying the harmony criteria. Rather, in accordance with the case law side above, its recommendation should be guided by the application of the actual words used in the town zoning code.
Lynn, so that means they cannot use the metrics as a strict go-no-go?
They, it can't be a strict no-go. And I, and it's sort of, you know, the last couple of applications that came through in P and Z, yes, staff still did their tests and their metrics and they found that two of the criteria went not met. But again, the other issue I have, and Frank said it, and I think Diana said it, is about making mass and bulk higher than the others. Well, that, that's not what the code says now. And that code says you, you, harmony is achieved through all these things. It doesn't say, well, you look at bulk and mass and scale first, and then you look at the other ones. It says, these are the things that you consider when evaluating harmony. And so the last P and Z meeting, look, the board was visibly uncomfortable, not having objective standards. Okay. But you look at those nine things, they consider those nine things, they consider staff's input, and then they make the decision. I mean, based on what the code says.
So I guess in my mind, as
Seven things. Sorry, Diane.
Yeah. The, um, so what I'm hearing is we can continue with the harmony review that we currently have with the metrics in place, as long as that final test are the subjective factors or the purple boxes, so that you look at, um, whether that, whether you can compensate with the setbacks, orientation and things of that nature.
Right. You consider all the criteria.
And, and knowing that there's a risk.
Well, can I ask you currently with, um, the writ of certiorari cases? I mean, the, the only challenge that we've had so far is not for someone who didn't get a home approved. Is that correct? It's some
That, that is correct, yes. Um, the other ones were approved. They were denied by staff, but they were approved by the planning and zoning board.
If we go with staff's review of the harmony factors and we could still have the planning and zoning board do their review and make a recommendation, but if we had staff as the final authority for the harmony reviews, then any of the appeals would come to town council.
Yes. So, so that is the administrative appeal process of it. What are they going to appeal on codified metrics?
They're going to codify, no, they're going to codify staff's, they're going to, codify. They're going to appeal staff's conclusions as to whether those criteria are met. That's what they would appeal. And then council would make the final determination if the criteria were met.
Frank, how will, how will you determine whether or not you recommend approval or not? If you cannot use architectural standards, design elements or your metrics in making those determinations? What I keep hearing is conversation that despite you saying you can't do that, that you can do it. And that you can do it has been rebuffed each time by, I'm sorry, I can't do this fairly consistently and transparently. So what's, what's the reality here?
And my response is based on the, if we can use the metrics or, or not. If we're not allowed to use the metrics, then no, staff cannot do, uh, that type of review and be consistent about it.
Well, Lynn has said
By that, Lynn.
Yes.
Because if you use the metrics and the final review is the subjective portion, so you can, so you have some judgment call, then those metrics aren't, aren't go-no-go, but they're reviewed under the subjective provisions, the orientation, landscaping, you know, the other, uh, criteria, then it would be, then that's basically the Palm Beach case, isn't it? The subjective criteria is okay.
Yes, basically, that's, that's where you'd have to do the metrics. The issue is those tests, like, well, if it's double this, then it's a, no, then it's a denial. Can't do that.
I can't do that.
So, but you can say, look, this is, uh, so F A R for this house is twice what the average is for I mean, you can use that as a consideration, as a factor, but you can't, that can't be like, no, it's a denial if it's the
If it's point five oh, that's not a pass, that's not a fail.
Right.
It's case by case.
It would have to be case by case, which I understand that
I, I
The objectivity, and I understand what you're saying, it's hard to do it consistently without, with those subjective standards. Totally understand. But that's what we're stuck with if we continue.
If, if we are to move forward.
Correct.
So so I'm glad we can use the criteria as long as the final review is the subjective questions because then the criteria for test one through three are, um, not a go-no-go. Want to take a break?
We could, if everyone wants to. Should we take a quick break?
I move, take a quick break.
Thank you. Now, go ahead and re-adjourn the meeting. And I'm not sure if we want to get some better explanation, exclamation, explanation of what Diana, you're referring to so that we can kind of continue to go through your, your time here. So
Put this out with the four tests. Thank you. I, I handed this out that had the May second, uh, workshop criteria that staff shared as to how they had been doing the harmony reviews. And then I added the, I made some clarifications just so that, that it's not a go-no-go on any of the specific metrics, but you look at the fourth, uh, test, which is subjective and it would be things from the purple box, such as the landscaping, site orientation, things like that for the bulk and, and mass. And then for the scale, you would look at thirty-four, two sixty-eight, that, uh, the heights that are listed there for the RS one through RS five. And, um, then you'd also look at the mitigating factors, like setbacks and, um, things of that nature. So that would be the two changes that I would make to the town's guidance to implement their existing codes that have been in place before the Senate Bill one eighty. And it is okay to have guidance that implements your codes. I mean, not all of the town's requirements are codified, but it's my understanding, like, you know, how many, how many copies of your building permit, you know, what do you have to apply for a fence permit? None of that is actually codified, but it's in the documents that the, that the town hand you because it's guidance to implement their codes. So we can continue with our
Well
harmony guidance that we've been using to implement these codes as long as the final review is a subjective criteria.
But zoning codes, um, you can't, you know, when courts have interpreted zoning codes, they won't put language or words that are not in there, in there. So you really have to stick to the language. So yeah, you could have a way that you do it, but bottom line is you've got to follow what the code says. And the other thing that I also wanted to mention that I was just thinking of when we took our little break, was if you put it back on staff, then that sort of takes the public out of the process because then it's like staff's making this determination, but there's no hearing on it unless it gets appealed and then it goes to the council. Is that, that's what you're proposing, Diana? I'm sorry.
I, I would still have the presentation before planning and zoning board and they would recommend, they would make their recommendations to staff and then staff would be the final authority. And then if there was an appeal, the appeal would come to town council. And to clarify what Michael Carp had said earlier, he did a public records request and asked for all of our, asked for all of my emails. So he had all my emails to Scott Shaw. I had told Scott Shaw that I, that I thought that the town council could review those decisions. And then this second email was correcting that none of these appeals go to the circuit court. It's not at town council.
But Diana, wait, I'm going to stall a point of order. You can talk about that at the council comments about that.
Yeah, I would suggest that it's better
Thank you.
If town council does those reviews for our citizens who think that they're overwhelmed by the house next to them or, or whatever it is that's part of their petition.
All right. We need to get some clarification on, on this. Frank, do you understand what Diana is saying? She wants to continue with the metric. She wants to continue with the metrics, if I have that right?
But not as a no-go, keep the subjective criteria, as in have the review final authority, go back to staff.
But make a presentation to the planning and zoning board with no recommendation?
Well, the planning and zoning board can make their recommendation.
But if, but I'm the final.
To staff, but so you're the final authority.
Well, that's backwards. Yeah, because what they do at staff, like, how would the planning zoning board be guided by, you know what I mean?
By their report, by the staff report.
So they would do a staff report, but they'd make the final decision?
Yes.
And get a recommendation by the planning and zoning board?
That could be your public, that could be a public hearing, like we do now.
And that could be appealed to council.
And that would be subjective, right?
That's a lot of information, I'm just working.
No, I'm trying to, yeah.
And instead of a writ of cert appeal, it would come to town council.
But it's still subjective. And we need, Len, you need to think that through, Frank, so that we can come to some conclusion on this, on Diana's proposal.
Frank, I think one of the elephant in the room is, can you make determinations based on not having architectural review available to you, not having building design elements, and not being able to use metrics for a go-no-go, which is exactly the process that was being used in May that keeps getting referenced? We've since learned that we can't use those metrics on a go-no-go basis. So if you're not using them to inform your decision, and you can't.
Mr. Cole, I'd direct you to the.
I'm asking, one moment, let me finish. And if you're, if you can't use architecture, building, design elements, or those, those metrics to support your decision, can you make this decision that they're asking you to make, irrespective of the process and who it goes to first, but can you do that?
I disagree with those assumptions.
Whether it's our decision, or it's the planning and zoning board's decision, without the use of metrics, now, our recommendation is not going to be clear, it's not going to be consistent. And that is another topic that we should be discussing now, because that is something that the planning and zoning board mentioned when that, when the decision was on their shoulders, you know, about having something in the code that was clear for, you know, the property owner that just bought the property, and they want to build the house, they look at the zoning code, and the zoning code says, this is your base zoning. Without it, without that being codified, without that being on paper, black and white, as Len mentioned, that's what I have to make my decision on, that's, I believe, the state statute that was quoted before, my decision without that is not clear, it's not consistent, it's not simple.
But.
Can I make the decision? Yes. But council has to be aware, you know, that that decision is not going to be consistent.
But have the reviews that you've done under Harmony, have you done seven of those houses, nine of the houses? How many?
I think we've done 21 homes.
21 homes under current Harmony review.
Oh, not current, since this started in 2021.
Since it started, so 21 homes under the Harmony review. And this, this test is just suggesting that we do keep the metrics, but it's not a go-no-go. Your final review is the subjective criterion, that's what makes it okay, and that's why I disagree with that assumption, because this, that's what makes it within the Palm Beach versus Burns case, that was a subjective decision that was upheld. So you could do metrics, 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 is there any way to mod, is there any way to mitigate this structure? And then it's those subjective metrics is what you're actually basing your decision on, and that would fit within the words in the code, it'll fit within Senate Bill 180, and it fits within the building design material statute that reserves the height, bulk, orientation, this, this, those type of Harmony reviews to the municipality for single-family homes.
So the document that you provided with the additional test, so that would be some sort of guiding document, correct? That's not codified?
It's intended, no, it's not codified, it's just guidance.
But it's a guiding document?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
How can I enforce that, Len, please? That, that's the part.
Well, you can't enforce it, it's just, I think she's just saying that that
Right.
Sort of provides a template for your review, or how it.
It'd be similar to your argument in the Scott Shaw case, right? Because you brought our, our criteria for the review in that case.
But at that time, I was using metrics.
He was.
And that, that's on the memorandum, the metrics. The reason why staff said no to that project was based on the metrics, that it did not pass one of the two, or both of the range, or the two.
And so they use their subjective judgment to make the decision, and that's what's before the court, under the writ of certiari, and so these subjective judgments aren't necessarily prohibited.
They consider Harmony, because that's what the code says, you have to consider Harmony. It doesn't say that they consider the subjective components only, just to clarify the record, but that's what it was.
Yeah, but the metrics are just don't want to be a go-no-go. So you've got, you're considering the metrics, you're considering mass, bulk, proportion, all the things that it says, but you're just not having it go-no-go on the metrics, you're going to a fourth criteria that's.
Can the decision be made following that guidance document? We could make that decision. In all honesty, I don't believe that it will be concise with each project, it would depend on the person that reviews it, it would depend on what is a go-no-go, even for the subjective parts of it. If that's the recommendation that council wants to move forward with?
Yeah.
Direction, we will do what council wants us to do. We're just telling you, because we heard just a few moments ago, that last time that we talked about this code, council was unaware of the, what may happen in the future. We're letting you know. The town attorney has, and the town attorney has said that there may be a risk, so he's also let you know about that.
Yeah.
Just be clear about that.
My final point would be 34268 are just numbers, and if we just do those numbers, I think in this whole room, we only need Caitlin. I mean, she could do it all, she could just run it through AI, and she could decide go-no-go. And I think we demand more quality for what gets put in our neighborhoods, and that wouldn't, not that Caitlin isn't quality, but, you know, it's more than a number, it's a subjective judgment.
All right, Mary Ann.
Well, I, you know, there was a long dissertation, and I have to say, you didn't clarify it to me, you made it just more complicated, more confusing. We are going around and around, we don't come to a conclusion. I personally feel, you know, I think what John did, you know, but then, you know, it's kind of weird to say, we have rules or non-binding rules. We write it down, but they are not binding. It's like, you know, you have a speed limit in town, but it's not binding, you know? You were just asking, go 30, but it's not binding, you can go 40 or 50, so I didn't, I saw that as unrealistic a little bit. And I thought what you said about, you know, recommendations, we talked about a pattern book, and a pattern book could be guidelines, you know? I mean, suggesting to people, doesn't it look nice, wouldn't you want to have? So those guidelines could be a pattern book. Now, Diana, I don't really know about test one, and test two, and test three, and if people really, it was a long presentation of her that I just got when I came here, so I didn't have the time to go through with it. But I always feel Harmony is in the eyes of the holder. Look at us, I agree more and more with, where is John Saluto? That we are an eclectic town, everybody should be able, really, within limits, to do what they can do. And look at us, the council, here's Lenny has a beard, DeeDee has curly hair, I have short hair, she has bangs, John has a ponytail, Peggy has long blonde hair, we are different, we are eclectic, people are different, plants are different, animals are different, but the houses have to be now a certain shape so that we like it. And I'm for individualism, I am for people who have the right, within certain boundaries, to do what they want. For example, if you have a piece of property, you take 35%, you put a house on it, you have an easement, you have setback.
Mary Ann, get, you have to pull your mic up.
You have an easement, setback, 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 and you have the required height, you might even get a little tower up here. Now, that should be enough on restrictions. I don't want the town to look everything the same. Look, our town doesn't look the same. I live in a condo, 12 floors, and I'm looking down from my 11th floor, and I tell somebody who wants three floors, they can't have it. I find that insincere. So ever since that ordinance 780, we have had problems. Before that, we didn't have problems, but this was like a big milestone. Now we are discussing it, everybody brings a new variance in it, we are trying, I'm just thinking of music, for example. What some people think is harmony, others do not agree with. But I won't say to these people, you can't listen to it, because I don't like it. They can listen to Phil Glass with his repetition, and so they don't have to all look and listen to Mozart. I find it is a limitation of personal freedom, and I, I'm not signing up for Harmony. I would like to go back to before ordinance 780. And at that time, we created a town that we all say, keep Juneau Beach, Juneau Beach, so let's keep it this way. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mary Ann, DeeDee.
Hi. Okay, I appreciate, John, thank you for taking the time to try to come up with a different arrangement of the code. I did something similar, I don't have anything to hand out, my, my reworking of it is not that complicated. I guess my question for Len and Frank would be, if we just take the town's existing appearance review regulations, and obviously we can't be more restrictive, and we don't want to be more restrictive, but could you explain why we just can't take out that problematic within 300 feet? If we took out the within 300 feet of the proposed site within the same zoning district, and now Harmony was just considered between properties within the same zoning districts, zoning districts are several blocks wide, so the homes that were being, you know, averaged for the metrics, well, obviously incorporate more larger homes, because, you know, 300 feet would go to, you know, three blocks. So can we not just take out that 300 feet, and still be able to calculate metrics that, you know, are doable, while also it would actually enlarge the potential for somebody to do more?
Those are two separate issues. Like, so you can change that language about your comparators, that's fine, you can loosen it up, you won't run afoul of Senate Bill 180, that's fine, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't address what we've been talking about for the last hour and 15 minutes, it's just, you know, applying the subjective criteria. You know, you can't use hard and fast.
I get it, but at least as far as, you know, people feeling or believing that their rights were taken away to build a larger structure, if we take away the comparative distance, then it addresses that component, because now their house, or their, their plan that they want to apply for, it's being considered within a, let's say, a three-block range versus a 300-foot range.
That, that would really only benefit the RS1 zoning district. All the other zoning districts, they're small enough, Mars Way is one, one street, Neptune is one street, the RS1 is where we get divided, you know, on the ridge, and in that case, we'll have 60 homes. And what that's going to do is just going to allow you to have a bigger range of homes to do the, that comparative part of the, of what we've been doing. And now your two times average is going to be bigger, your low to high range is going to be, it's going to be bigger.
Right.
Ultimately, that would only benefit, from my point of view at this time, the RS1 zoning district, and it would allow them to have a bigger home.
Because that's the, the largest zoning district.
Yeah, and it's divided in many, many parts of the town.
Okay, so that, that's one question. The other question is that I was trying to wordsmith, is in terms of, again, not taking away what people can do in terms of the size of the home, could there be a sentence added to the definition, Harmony shall not imply that a single-family home cannot have a second story, so that we're not limiting that? You know, you're just sort of, you're declaring that, yes, things have to have, you know, an appearance of some sort of harmony, but not to preclude a second story. Is that legal?
If that's what you, I mean, that's, again, relaxing a standard, so if you want to say that there's nothing, that somebody could always have a second story, and then are you going to include a tower element too? They could always have a, excuse me, second story and a tower.
That you say that, you know, that just because it has to be in harmony, doesn't mean that you shall not have a second story, because architects can design homes, you know, very creatively, so just because there's a second story in a tower, doesn't mean it's not harmonious necessarily. So that, that's just some wordsmithing suggestions that I have there. The other thing I would, I would just like to go back to considering is the potential of creating an appearance review board and a design review board. I know when we discussed the different red and green options, the council didn't vote in favor of an appearance review board, but I did take the time to talk to Len a little bit about what that might look like. And that would allow us more flexibility, it seems. And I guess I would ask the board, is that something, you know, that we would want maybe Len and staff to bring back, an outline of what that would look like, and see, you know, a little bit more if it's feasible? We didn't have a description of the mechanics of how that would work, all we had, you know, was a brief description. So I would ask council if there's, you know, not that we're approving it tonight, or anything like that, but to just bring back something to council that outlines how that would work, and maybe delve into the feasibility of that more. The other thing, which is not tied to the exact definition, or anything of Harmony, is I would like to, well, I'm going to say, entertain a motion to join Senate Bill 180 lawsuit, because I see how everything has had a bearing. I don't know if anybody wants to second that, I don't know if it's a formal motion, but let me, please, let me finish, it's important. Because Senate Bill 180 has had such a huge impact on what we're trying to do here, we were on the verge of, you know, creating some new codes and reworking things, and it really just threw a wrench in everything that we were doing, and I talked to Len about this as well, and he wrote a resolution for the village of North Palm Beach, and we could certainly join the lawsuit, and I think we have every right to appeal at the state level what's going on here, because basically, we're allowing the legislators in Tallahassee to dictate how we do business here, and I don't think that that's right. So I'd like council to discuss joining that lawsuit.
So what I was going to say, DeeDee, was I'd like to have you bring that up at council comments, since that is a discussion that we need to have on the cost and everything. So we have a motion on the table, do you mind bringing that up at council comments, so that we can actually have a full discussion on that, because we have people waiting here.
Would anybody want to second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
She did second the motion.
Please.
Please.
Okay, so please, let's, well, so we can't discuss it, now we're going to discuss it.
Well, that's a kind of, we're not, that's not the topic, it's a point of order, actually, so we're not on that topic of fighting the SB 180 right now.
Can I continue, because?
Well, wait a second, I wasn't finished. So I would like to talk about it.
You only gave me like seven minutes to speak, so can I?
No, no, I'm just saying I would like to talk about it, but it's not appropriate to talk right now, because that's.
It's option two, it's option two, we're talking option one, option two. That's part of option two.
Excuse me, Diana, can you hang on? What I'm talking about is the lawsuit in SB 180 is not part of this topic, so that's the only thing I'm telling you, that, you know, that's the point of order that I was making, that should be brought up, we can have a full discussion on it, I don't mind, but I don't think this is the time to do it, when we have people waiting for a decision on the other issues that we have. a decision on the other issues that we have.
Can I ask the council, or maybe Caitlin can ask for a consensus, on thoughts about creating an appearance review board? That would also, that directly addresses the harmony question between options one and two. Can, John, are you interested in the discussion on appearance review board? Could we delve into that further? I'm interested in your thoughts.
I don't understand the question, DeeDee.
The question is, Len had told us that one of the ways to continue examining harmony is for the town to create an appearance review board or design review board with a board of experts in the field. Would you be interested in learning more about that option?
I think we already discussed that last meeting.
We did, but not in depth. So I was just, like the mechanics of it and how exactly it would work implementation-wise. We didn't, we discussed it superficially, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I'm a skeptic. I don't think it would work.
Okay.
I think we have to get on to the other topics first.
Okay, all right, thanks. I was just interested in your thoughts.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
We have a planning and zoning department. We have a P and C board. And now we want a third board to create even more confusion. I personally think this is just too much paperwork, too much discussion, no action, et cetera. No, I would not entertain another board.
I'm in favor of it. It's just asking for qualifications for our P and C members is the way I understood it.
I'm not for going forward with that, but I'll explain that during my time. DeeDee, do you have anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay. I think all of us want to find a solution for both sides. At least we want to try, but we need to look at some of the facts. We know that architectural review for single-family and two-family homes was eliminated by the state statute legislation two years ago. It wasn't a decision of council to do that. That was a decision because of state preemption. So we simply can't do architectural review and we haven't been able to for two years. Appearance review and the definition of harmony for single-family and two-family homes, that's what contains the metrics that we were using. And the metrics have not been codified. That's the big problem. When you haven't codified something, you can't use it because it becomes subjective. And when something is subjective, which Len has told us in the Colts, it's because of the Burt J. Harris Jr. Private Property Rights Protection Act. It exposes municipalities to litigation if property rights are restricted. The other problem we have here is that staff stated, I don't know how many times they have stated they don't feel comfortable using subjective measures for these homes. And then, of course, we have Senate Bill 180 which prohibits us from creating new laws. So one of the problems we have with these uncodified metrics or subjective decisions is it doesn't give any owners or potential owners any clear and fair understanding of what they can build. And it makes that whole process so subjective. And that is not what I don't think council should be doing. Florida statutes requires that land development regulations contain specific and uniform standards. And these standards must be written, objective, and consistently applied. So if we have any type of arbitrary enforcement of unwritten subjective standards, it can violate the due process clause of the Florida and U.S. Constitution. And that's there. And that's why people, if we do that, they're going to come in and they're going to sue you. And they're probably going to, they're going to sue the town and they're probably going to win. Excuse me, can you stop or, I'm going to give you a warning. You can either stop or I'll have to have you removed, okay? So they can't be applied differently to different homeowners without being on a codified basis. So I think that's a big problem for the town. And I don't think we should ask staff, who's told us, I don't know how many times, that they don't want to do something subjective to try and put them in that position. We still have the ability to add an architectural design book, which would give detailed guidelines and those items in green. And that doesn't add more restrictive guidelines. Or, John, I would look if staff feels and Len feels that John's suggestion, that could be rewritten and maybe base it on a voluntary basis, if that's a possibility. As long as we're not telling staff that they've got to look at these, something subjectively and try and decide which houses you can build more and which you can't. I want to go to the architectural board a little bit because if we had a professional architectural board, if that's even possible, what professional is going to go on the board and risk their professional reputation when council is telling them that they have to do something that's subjective? And again, it's not really a position I don't think a professional would want to be in.
But that's not true. It's subjective. Len said when the board, if we do have a design board, Len, can you, that's what I mean.
No, well, because our criteria is subjective currently. So in that, in my memo, I talked about how if you're going to apply subjective criteria, then it would be more beneficial to have people experience in those types of fields.
Yes, so what I'm saying is, the question is exactly, what is the staff or what is the professional board going to be reviewing? Because they can't use architectural review. They can't use the subjective metrics. They can't use metrics. And then otherwise, it would be subjective. And we're putting them in the same position that we've got staff in. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me to do it that way. And I just don't feel that option two is a viable solution. And I think option one should be approved. I think that the architectural pattern and design book that will help and I really do feel that people will follow that. I think people want to live in Juno Beach. I think they'll voluntarily look at that pattern book. And we can really do a lot with that. We can do things with balconies and setbacks, porches, whatever we feel would make and beautify the town and give it more harmony and bring it to the point that we'd all like to see in architecture. And I do believe people will follow that. But I'm still, I still feel that doing option one and doing the book is a good idea, or maybe moving into John's suggestion. But I'd like to get Rob and Frank's thoughts on John's position again and if that is even doable, and Len.
Frank, why don't you give it a shot first and I'll perhaps add a couple of comments?
I was just going to say that we did get that information earlier today. So my comments are just based on what I read today. If it's voluntary, we create a code section that references appearance within maybe each zoning district. We include all of the incentive, no, I'm sorry, not incentives, all of the voluntary regulations or Kotex amendments that we're going to do, pattern book, the front facade, the setbacks, in its own little section. And we make sure that that says that, that the town, an asterisk we put in there is voluntary. This is not, we don't have an architectural style for single-family homes. These are basically recommendations. We could do that according to what I'm hearing today. It is voluntary. Staff already has a discussion with the applicants. We have a pre-application meeting with them. We go through the responses of those criterias. It's part of our checklist for the appearance review criteria application. That could be part of it. Have you answered, have you addressed X, Y, and Z? Mind you that they could say, Frank, go kick rocks. And that's all it is. What am I going to do in that case if that gets appealed? Maybe I'll have to draft a staff memorandum for the record, put it with the building permit in case we get questioned later by another resident whether staff at least tried it, reviewed it, and gave it a good try to see if it meets harmony. You know, the thing with us is that as long as it's voluntary, the metrics that are being placed in there, it's well-known that it's voluntary. You know, or we work with the proposed languages that John mentioned in there. We would have to massage those. And I would probably need the help of Len to do that, to make sure that we're striking out anything that has to do with materials, roof, color, anything that's architectural, any of the words that have to shall, become may. It's going to take time. I just didn't have that time today.
Okay, in that sense, it's like a mini architectural book that we're doing here, like figuring out a little bit.
All voluntary, yep.
I know we have a motion on the table. Do we have more discussion on this item? The motion was the architectural board, professional architectural board. Do you want to?
I didn't make a motion on that.
You did, and Diana seconded it.
No, there was no motion.
The motion was on doing a, joining the lawsuit for 180.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So do we have any more discussion on site plan and appearance review for single-family?
Yes, I have a suggestion that I would like to see staff and the attorney bring back, I guess, a fleshed-out version of John's proposal. I know Frank just went through it, but obviously, it wasn't an agenda item. Frank just got it this afternoon and I don't think we can expect him to have the whole idea fleshed out. So on the next October agenda, I would like either consensus or whatever you want me to call it, motion or consensus, to have a fleshed-out version of John's proposal to look at because I don't think, again, it's fair for us to feel that it's a knee-jerk decision to decide on something. We need to see what that looks like in practice. We need you, Frank, to see if it's feasible in practice before we vote on it or say yea or nay. And that would be my suggestion. I'd like to hear more on that. Would anybody be open to that?
Mary Ann?
I mean, how long have we, how long have we been discussing the subject? It's just, I mean, I made up my mind and I don't think any further discussions will change it because I had months and a lot of material to read. So, I mean, if somebody cannot make up their mind after all of this, it's kind of sad because we have other things in the town to do. We have, you know, we are just talking about harmony for hours. And we haven't come to an agreement. We vote yes, then we retract the vote, then we bring it up. Now we want an idea. The staff has to work again. You know, it seems like the staff has other work to do than just listening to our proposals and.
Okay.
I would just like to say something else. Diana, I just want to finish the thought.
Did you cut me off, DeeDee?
I don't know, did I cut you off?
Yeah.
Sometimes you cut me off and you insult me. So maybe we're even tonight, okay? We'll call it a draw. Okay, see.
How easy, you can get along. Do you see that?
Are we good? Go ahead, DeeDee.
It's not just about not, you know, saying that, well, we can't make a decision. It's not about just saying, oh, we made a decision and simply moving on to the next topic. I think the intention is to find a balanced and thoughtful approach that respects both the people with the property rights concerns and the people with the concern about the community's character and keeping Juno Beach small. It's really, we're trying to achieve something here. It's not just about, oh, let's vote and get it out of the way because we have other things to do or places to be. So I just want people to know that I'm trying to be careful. And this is very complicated. And obviously, it needs a lot of decision and time, not decision. It needs a lot of time if you're not just going to slop it off and say, well, this is good enough because I'm trying, I'm hoping that we can do better. And that good enough isn't always just good enough. And I just want to say that, that it's with a deep and sincere intention to do better that I'm talking about this still.
All right, and before I go, hang on, before I go to you, I want to see, I want to get Rob's thoughts on being able to come forward with this, just to make sure we're on the right track with the suggestion that coming forward and flushing out.
I would somewhat differ from Len because some of this language is going to have to be passed through him if he has time available to do that. And we follow effectively what Frank had described. We could certainly put together the language that reflects those conversations and bring it back for further discussion.
Then can you also mention what we do moving forward? Does that mean the metric stays in place? And I know you had some concern about that, correct?
Yes, we have a concern because we're not supposed to be using the metrics as go, no-go. So if we have to stop doing that, we should stop doing that while we continue to consider options.
Okay, so that'll be a decision too. When somebody makes a motion, we should probably make two motions. One, to either keep the metrics, let the metrics go, and then to move forward and let staff bring back a version of John's process. Diana, go ahead.
I'm not in favor of John's process because it's voluntary or optional. And we know that developers don't really do voluntary or optional. And I don't believe it's just about keeping Juno Beach small. I've got a 2019 letter that is regarding to proportion, scale, and massing to the characteristics of surrounding properties. And it says, "The developer provided a self-serving version of a rendering that does not give an accurate description of proportion, scale, and massing of the project to the character of the surrounding developing properties." This is about 461 Venus, that's 15,000 square foot duplex. And this is the 10,000-square-foot homeowner that lives next door. And it says, "The developer is trying to maximize their profit on the massive size of this building and incorporating a second tower. The developer will be gone in two years and will have pocketed their profits. The citizens in the neighborhood and visitors to the town hall park will have to look at this massive structure for decades. Every time you drive down Ocean Drive, you will see a condo-sized building towering over our park, creating a canyon tunnel look on Ocean Drive. This is not consistent in keeping with the quaint small-town charm. This development will also affect and lower property values on all neighboring properties because it is massive and will block views. But worse yet, it'll look like a giant condo among the nice..." "Single-family homes" is what it should say. "Staff will tell you that you can't protect views, but the code states you can't diminish property values either." So the proportion, scale, and massing compared to the surrounding developed properties can lower our property values. Just because 461 Venus might be able to sell this development at a high-dollar value does not mean it would not devalue all the properties surrounding it. Devaluation is a criteria for not approving the structure." And Peggy, this was your family's letter to Venus. So even if you have a large 10,000-square-foot house, you can be impacted by massive homes if the town does not keep its codes in place and does not do the reviews that we're required to do that have been in our code since before 2019 because this letter is from that date-time period. I think that as long as we keep hearing conflicting messages that we can't use metrics and the reality is the metric can't be go, no-go. The final test has to be subjective. So we can continue doing what we're doing as long as that final test is, are there mitigating factors? And I think that's basically the only change that needs to be made. But if the staff is going to come back and look at, I would like for them to really look at options because ever since May 2nd, the only thing the staff has come back with is 34-268. And that's why I keep referring it to the North gazebo because we went through three or four iterations where the staff only came back with replacing the whole gazebo. And it was over, it was $300,000 or something. It was an astronomical amount. So we finally were able, after council talked and talked and talked, we were able to get staff to agree, okay, we can do a repair. So then that's what we're moving forward with. But this is similar because every time we ask the staff to come back, we really need harmony reviews, we get, can't do it, 34-268. And I really have confidence in Frank and his staff. And the 19 reviews that you've done are very good. Quality architecture homes have been approved during that process and I just think we should keep doing that.
John, I'm going to just jump in here before I have you talk because Diana, this is an example of you taking something out of context and turning it around and using it when it's not even the same situation. My husband wrote a letter back on, and God, it has to be eight, 10 years ago. I don't know the date of that letter. But it was a letter from my husband that discussed a completely different set of circumstances. This was a two-family home that cut the dune. This was a two-family home that cut the dune out, right next door to us. So they cut out 13 feet down on the dune. So that, that was a complaint on harmony, on cutting a dune out and not pushing the house back into the side of the dune like the other homes. So it's completely different than the homes on the ridge. It wasn't about the size. It wasn't about, you know, that particular house has one of the biggest lots in Juno Beach. So they had a, they had a right to build it, and they had a right to build a two-family because the council had approved that. But what the neighborhood was complaining about was because they were building it, they cut the dune out and built it completely in front towards the park. And, and so we had a 13-foot drop-off behind three adjoining properties. So that's, that's what that was about. It had nothing to do with what's happening here on the ridge. So, you know, I don't appreciate that being used for that, Diana. And I just wanted to say that. And John, I'll go on to, to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, gazebo, we're talking about the gazebo and a repair. We're talking about repairing 780. This is, this conversation is because ordinance 780 was passed two, you know, year, two, two years ago. And it's, it's a faulty piece of, uh, legislation. That's the kindest words I could say, that, that preponderance of the homes are in 300 feet. And these harmony terms without codifying it is just bonkers. We can't put anything out for that, of, we, we can't enact things without tying it to the code. We can enact stuff like the harmony, the, the staff's version of how to apply harmony if we had it in the code. So if there was a, if this was something that the council liked, harmony, staff, test one, test two, test three, test four, the way to do that is to put it in the code and say, we're going to apply harmony, and the staff has a published code version that everyone can look online and understand what it is. But you can't just say that you're making up a, a, a methodology on a decide how big people could make their houses. Nobody does that. Everything in the code, and, and I know there's things like, well, you could change how many copies of plans you can put in. Well, all these things, even copies of plans, fees and procedures, there's a basis for that in the code somewhere. That, you know, people just don't make up things, how staff is going to apply things. They have to have an ordinance first that refers to it. And a year or two ago, the council could have did that. They took a pass. Took a complete pass on it. So the question is, when the Florida State Legislature decided that we could not apply architect or design review standards of single-family homes, the council had a choice what to do about it. They could have used the guidance that the legislature left behind to regulate the size of single-family homes. Because right in the legislation, it says, "The term does not include the height, bulk, orientation, or location of a dwelling on a zoning lot, or the use of buffering or screening to minimize potential adverse physical or visual impacts or to protect the privacy of neighborhoods." That's right in the regulation that said we could not apply architecture. And, and the council had every right, every reason to use that. Add landscaping requirements, change the setbacks, put something in about the height, the bulk, whatever they wanted to do. But you didn't do it. Instead, you got this, this combobulated 780. And, and this, this 780 doesn't, and this, this thing that Frank came up with, Frank. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a, a good attempt at trying to do the impossible, but it's just not rooted in the code. So I don't think we could use this. I just don't, I, I just don't see any way we could use any kind of a methodology that's back in the code. So, but my proposal was an attempt to repair it by doing this. Leaving as much as we can in our code that talks about harmony, that's been there since 1992. I really think we need to leave that appearance review criteria. Be very careful about taking out any of the words that we might be sorry they're gone later. We want to keep those words in there. Harmony, um, you know, the preponderance of the area. And the reason is, if we ever get an application for something that looks like a Mickey Mouse house or something like this, okay, we'd be glad we had it there. We'd be glad to make our stand on this. And all of us in town will say, yes, we're going to fight this, and we're going to fight it on the basis of harmony. It says it's got to be a design in proportion, and that is what we're going to use harmony for. That's why we keep it in the code. That's why appearance review criteria stays in the code. But the other language is, we have to make very sure we're not giving people a false impression by leaving harmony words and site and, and appearance review in the code. We want to make sure that people are not going to get the wrong impression that it's somehow we're going to mandate people get smaller houses. We have to make sure it's voluntary. The question is, why put in, uh, words about voluntary and it's a requirement in the same sentence? And that's the reason, because we're leaving harmony in the code for a reason, in case we need it. But we have to explain how we're going to use that principle and still, um, you know, do the best job we can under the circumstances. And we're not in a good position with the state. Now that seven Senate Bill 1, uh, 180 came along and says we can't make any changes, we're very limited. We could take things out, but I want to take them out with a scalpel and leave as much in as we can.
All right. Are we ready to have someone make a motion, or?
Can I respond to John?
Sure.
Uh, because I, I do agree that it's important to leave the language in the code so that, especially so that we have some, some language if we need to deny a home that's, that's bizarre. I know on the Planning and Zoning Board, they said a tar paper shack or a McDonald's arches, and that it is important that we have something in our code so we can do that. But if our code says it is voluntary, then you're not getting what you want. It can't be voluntary and allow you to not approve a house because if it's voluntary, then it's, it's a suggestion, and it's not, not required. And the other thing, the ordinance 780 that it passed two years ago, then the next step was to go with Shinmore, to have them look at FAR, to have them look at the North Palm Beach codes, and to do some other things. And that was about a year ago. And then that got put on hold with, uh, they worked on three. I guess the first three, they were going to do signs and lighting or something else, and they didn't move past that. But there is an iterative process, and it was in place to move forward with something to help the staff with the harmony reviews. But I think the 19 that they've done are, are, have done a great job, and that we should continue with that.
Um, Rob and Frank, can you guys come back with something, Ben? You feel comfortable with that? I just need to make sure if we ask for a motion and that's the decision, that you guys feel comfortable with that.
Uh, again, I think if Len can work with this on language, we can prepare something that mirrors what we're hearing Vice Mayor Calligan having suggested and what Frank summarized in his comments. Yes, it's, it's largely voluntary is, is what we're hearing, and that's what we can come back with. And Town Council can discuss it further, the merits, the drawbacks, but we could certainly do that if Len has time to help us with it.
Oh, yeah, for the October meeting, you mean?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right. Um, could I get a motion on that? And then we need to discuss what staff should be doing now until we bring that back because it probably won't be solidified in October even. It might be November. And, uh, we need to make that decision too. Do you want to talk about that now? Staff moving forward, and, and I'd like to get some input on that from both, well, from Rob and from, from Len and Frank.
Well, Linda said we can't use the metrics for go, no-go, and that's what we've been using them for. So it seems to me we would have to stop that. Len, I see your lights on as well.
No, I was just, we, I mean, you can analyze the metrics all you want. You just can't use them as a no-go, go. It can't be a, you know, if it meets this, yes, if it doesn't meet that, no. But you can prepare those tables and just show that it's bigger than what's already there. I mean, that's fine. It's just, it can't be a hard and fast no-go.
So what's the purpose of that?
You guys good with that? Okay, so I need a motion. Someone can make a motion, please.
I'd, I'd make a motion to continue our harmony reviews for 34, 116, 3B2, with the metrics that we're using now, with the final review being the subjective review. So the metrics are not go, no-go.
And I'll second that, but I'd like to amend the motion. Can I, is that the right process?
I'll stay in his motion, so she...
Yes, I'm seconding the motion, but I would, can I suggest an addition that we leave, um, I guess latitude or opening to further, obviously further discuss this, um, method that John is proposing? So in, this is, uh, in the meantime, to continue appearance review until, um, whatever. That's it.
Yes, I would accept that.
No, I understand what you're saying. Well, because that's how we started, to come back next meeting.
John, uh, we're in discussion. Is that in line with what you wanted to do?
I, I don't quite understand the motion.
DeeDee, do you want to explain the motion to John?
Diana made the motion, so I'll let her explain.
What we do with the applications that are in-house, we use our existing codes is, is the answer.
Yeah, so if I understand the motion, we use our existing codes. There's no hard and fast test, but we apply harmony based on those criteria, and that we'll come back trying to work through the methodology that, um, the Vice Mayor proposed. That's my understanding of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, on that basis, I'm against it because I don't think it's fair to the Planning and Zoning Board to put them in that position of saying we're not going to have metrics for them to use, and they have to decide on a pass beyond someone's house.
So how would you amend the motion to make it work in the interim? I mean, we're doing this in the interim anyway.
That's a job staff should be doing.
So can we revert it to staff review? Len, is that, is that legal?
No, we cannot revert. The code provides for the, how it's reviewed, so that would require a code change.
Then can we do a code change for staff, to allow for staff review? I mean, I would most...
But that's an ordinance, and that would take P and Z, two readings, all that kind of stuff.
Well, we, it's doable.
Just to provide a quick update, um, we only have one application at the moment. They're appearing at the October PNC meeting. I don't have any other applications. If I was to have another application, it usually takes more than 30 days for me to go through the process, the review, the back and forth, and the creation of the memo. So...
Is the one pending a new construction?
It, it is a complete house, yes. Not a renovation, but from what I seen, um, I mean, we, we haven't finalized the document itself, but it's under 4,000 square feet. I believe it actually meets, um, one of the two criterias that staff has been using so far. So if...
That doesn't mean you're not going to get other applications in necessarily.
That's correct. It just means that it would be thirty-plus days, right.
So John, do you, um, do we want to go ahead and?
Well, staff's going to do the, um, so, so it would remain with the Planning and Zoning Board for now? And what criteria would they use? You said the existing code?
Yeah, we'd use the harmony criteria that's in the code. It's just, it just won't be a hard and fast. They'll still do the same analysis that they've been doing. It just won't be a...
When you say, "What's in the code," Len, are you saying this four-test step?
No, I'm, well, I'm, well, I'm saying when it says, where it says, "Harmony can be achieved through proper consideration of setback scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, orientation, site planning, and landscaping." That's what we'll use, because that's what the code says. We don't have any other choice.
And it, it should be noted that they won't be using architectural review or building design elements in the objective assessments. So no metrics, no architecture, no building design elements in making those determinations.
What, what do you mean by the hard, fast? It won't be a hard, fast rule?
So it, it won't be an automatic, they, they can use the metrics to, to analyze the various criteria of harmony. They just, it, it can't be a, well, if it's more than twice the FAR, it's a denial. You know, you'd have to take everything in.
So the, the way I see it is that we would still create a very similar memorandum with the same table. We would put the numbers that we normally put in there. But those numbers are, we're not going to base our recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Board based on those numbers. They're just going to be out there, factual. You're going to see what they are. Is this house two times the average? Is this house within the range? That information is going to be, uh, visible to, to the Planning and Zoning Board. That is providing you the facts, providing the facts to the Planning and Zoning Board. Because, you know, we don't expect them to go and get the information from the property appraiser, square footage, and all that stuff. We would also take a look at all the other components of harmony landscape. We would put our factual information, you know, um, are the setbacks 20 feet? Oh, maybe they, they give us 25 feet. We would say, okay, so for the, um, orientation part, that meets that criteria. Factual information, and then the Planning and Zoning Board can make the determination based on that.
So if I may, then what has changed?
You're not getting a recommendation.
It's completely confusing because...
You're not getting a recommendation.
You're saying, so if you're, you're using the metrics, but you're not considering them. You're using the metrics, but you're not using them to make a recommendation. You're going through the calculations.
That was my argument, uh, before.
Yeah, they're, and it provides factual information about how big it is in comparison to other houses within the...
Which is what you've done anyway.
Which was what they've done, but, you know, they're not going to have these tests, the, well, this fails because it's more than twice. They'll give the factual information.
But you'll make a recommendation, or you won't make a recommendation to the board?
What recommendation am I going to make if I can't use metrics?
You just...
No, no, I, I would provide factual information. That, that, that was my argument, you know, two hours ago.
And, and then the other issue is the community, because when you're writing that it doesn't meet this, or it's that, and then the community sees Planning and Zoning looking at it and approving it, you know, that, it's so, it just doesn't seem like that's the direction we should go. Because you, you really need the individual owners of these properties to have clear, objective, consistently applied, um, process in this. And I, I just, I just think we're, we're not going the right direction on this.
Well, well, could I ask a question then? Frank, you said that if you can't use metrics, you can't make a recommendation, right? That would...
He said that.
I asked what, I said, what type of recommendation would I give?
Right, right. But the implication is that you could not give a proper recommendation if you can't use metrics.
Not one that's, um, clear, objective, and consistent.
Well, how, how would we expect the Planning Board to do that?
You can't.
That, that, that's the argument. You at least, Len, but the way that I read Len's memorandum was that they would still have the same problem, but if we get into a lawsuit, they have this, you know, I'm an AICP. I am an architect, registered architect, so the argument that they made the correct decision is better in the judge's eyes. I believe that was the argument, not that it was going to be easier for them.
Which is what Palm Beach does.
It's more defensible.
It's more defensible, correct.
More defensible, right. And in Palm Beach, again, they do architecture.
They do.
I don't know of any community that does harmony or appearance. It's architecture. Palm Beach force does architecture. Um, yeah, yeah.
So what Palm Beach does is not even really comparable to what we do here, is, is the main point.
So what we're, we're doing is we're not giving clear, objective, and consistently applied, um, information to our, our homeowners that come in. And it just, I, I mean, I think that we need to move forward with the direction we're going, but I, I just don't think we can continue to have staff do what they're doing. And it's not, if we can't do metrics, it's not like we're taking that away from them. They can still continue to do something at a future date.
They, I, I think where we're kind of painting the corner here and putting staff in until we can come back and have a discussion about the other proposal is no metrics, no architecture, no design elements. Frank saying, you know, I'm going to have a, a problem. I can put together the summary, but what is he basing his recommendation on? I think the answer to that question fundamentally, if I'm put in his position, is I'm just going to use the criteria of, does it, does it comport with the zoning? Uh, you know, if the zoning regulations are complied with, I can provide more data to help the next level take a look at it. Uh, but if I have to make a recommendation, and it has to be clear, transparent to the public, and consistent from one to the other, and I can't use any of these things, the only clear linkage I can make that's defensible, if I'm in his role, is just to use the, the zoning regulations and let Planning and...
role, is just to use the zoning regulations and let Planning and Zoning P and Z Board look at it and, and see what they think. And in the meantime, we work on the alternative solution and get it through. Fortunately, Frank said he's only got one application pending. So the impact associated with that would, would be minimal pending the next step that we take. But I don't want people to think he's doing something he's not, or to get angry when they find out that he's doing what he has to do at the same time. It's a, it's a tough position that he's in and he's got to, you know, navigate it. So have I captured that right, Frank, or no? Okay. And Frank is nodding yes for those at home who can't see him.
Can I make a statement?
I had.
I think, what I hear is that repeating over and over and over again that we can't use metrics. And then it reminds me of repeating over and over again that harmony takes away property rights. And then Ruben has said that harmony does not, the harmony review does not take away property rights. It's a reasonable regulation. And this repeating over and over again that you can't use metrics. If you look at the terms in the, in the code, setback, that's measurable. Scale, that's your height, that's measurable. Mass, that's measurable. Bulk, that's measurable. Proportion is within the structure. Overall height, orientation is where it's located on the property. Site planning and landscaping. I think with these metrics that you can, and I've heard Len say too, that you can use metrics, it just can't be a go, no-go. So we would use metrics for setback. We'd use metrics for scale. We'd use metrics for mass. We'd use metrics for bulk. You just wouldn't say yes or no. You continue with the subjective criteria and then you'd have your overall recommendation as to what you do. But you could certainly say it doesn't meet setbacks, and you could certainly say that it's not within scale of the context of the neighborhood or whatever. It's, I don't see how that, this is something that's not doable, especially for the talented staff that Frank himself is and his staff and all the things you do for the really large projects. Certainly can do this for single-family homes.
I agree.
They can do that.
So we're back again to where we were just a few minutes ago, right? Len, is that the way you see it? That we're doing no metrics, no recommendation, and Planning and zoning is going to sit there having to make a decision on something that they have no information on, which they said they don't really want to do?
Staff can provide that information. I think that's what Frank's saying. He'll provide the metrics, he'll provide the data, let's not call it metrics for now. He'll provide the underlying data to support, you know, whatever the application is, but.
Just no recommendation?
He can make a recommendation. That's.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, DeeDee.
John, you want to go first?
Well, Len.
What?
I think what, I thought what you were saying is you can look at the metrics, but you can't use those as part of your decision.
You can't base your decision solely on the metrics.
You could, you can't base it, so let me see if I get this straight. You can't base it solely on the metrics, but you can use the metrics whether, how this applies to another house as part of your decision?
Yeah, you can, you can analyze the data. I don't, I don't see why you can't analyze the data because we have definitions of those terms. And, I mean, there's one, I forget which one it is, it's mass or whatever, that says the size of the structure or whatever the case may be. So you show the size of this proposed structure against the one in the comparative, the ones in the comparative zone.
And I think.
But my problem was always this test one, test two. Like, you can't, if it's this, you can't do that. If it's this, you can't do that. That was my problem. You just got to look at the criteria, apply them, and make a decision. And that's what I've consistently said to the board as well.
Okay. So is the staff okay with that methodology that you can take the metrics and compare it to what they're proposing, to what's there now, or what the average is, and use it as part of your decision?
Just as I mentioned before, we can do it. I just don't believe that it's going to be consistent with every single one of them.
Okay.
That's it. So we'll follow that.
And I agree with you.
Right. It's just not going to be consistent from neighborhood to neighborhood.
So as long as, Diana, you, you, you recognize that what Frank's saying, it wouldn't be consistent. It wouldn't be.
I hear him say that appearance review requires judgment calls, and I agree with that all the time. That's what these case laws says when they uphold the subjective criteria. They say appearance reviews are a judgment call. I agree.
So is there something wrong with a judgment call in zoning code, applying zoning code?
Again, that was architecture, this is appearance. There is a difference there. If we are told, these are the regulations, we can, we can look at the metrics, you want staff to actually give a recommendation, we can give a recommendation. The other part that we seem to be forgetting right now is the public and what the Planning and Zoning Board mentioned at the May 2 workshop, is that they wanted this to be consistent, clear, simple, for somebody to understand. I don't believe, my personal opinion, that this is addressing that.
Well.
It's not.
Can I make a comment?
Well, how is that going to be held up in court? How is that?
That's exactly the question.
That's the question, I mean.
Look, you don't know until you go to court. That's the whole thing. But there are, I mean, the cases that I cited in the memo, they do say that just because it's subjective doesn't mean it's invalid. You can make subjective determinants.
And the recommendation in that case was that we would have a better shot if we had a professional board.
Correct.
To give the final decision.
And we would have a better shot. And we would have a better shot if we had criteria that were fleshed out, like these other communities have that do this. They have substantial criteria upon which to make their decisions, and we don't have that. So that further exaggerates this problem of having rules that people can clearly see, that rules that people can see and understand and build their plans around, and staff can review. I just have a question, Frank. So if you have this system like you're describing and you're saying, yeah, I could do it, but it's not going to be consistent, it's not going to be clear, and it doesn't have good standards, walk us through how you, how you conduct your review and make a recommendation. What are you going to do? You've got no architecture, no building design elements, no metrics that are go, no-go. Walk me through the logic of a review and how you would make that recommendation and what would you use? Because that's what, but that's what they're asking you to do. You better know the answer to this, you know?
Yes. You would have to go back to base zoning. That is your max criteria that you have, that you know you cannot go past that. You know, as a, as a plan reviewer, I would look at the house, look at the square footage. Does it meet the 35% lot coverage, two times, which would give me the FAR height? That, those are the basics that I would have to go back to.
Can I make a comment, please? I haven't said much for a change. It would be nice if I could speak.
Yeah, you're fine.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. What Len is saying is that, I'm going to repeat, that subjectivity doesn't make it illegal. So why are we trying to put a cookie cutter over subjectivity and shoot ourselves further in the foot? If it's okay, why are we struggling against that? Why don't we just accept that subjectivity is okay? If the Planning and Zoning Board doesn't like it, let them resign. That's their job. If you're tasked with reviewing subjective criteria, then you have to be comfortable doing it. If they're not comfortable, then maybe they are not in the right role doing this kind of job. And they should reconsider doing that, you know? And so I think that to force, please.
Okay, we need to stop out there. I've told you guys I don't know how many times, and please, you're going to have to leave if you continue to make comments in the back. Shabon O'Donnell and Mary Peterson, you need to stop, okay?
Please, we don't need to name names or anything. Let's just accept that this is going to be subjective to some extent, and just accept that. What I've written down is the word comfortable. I keep seeing staff's not comfortable, Planning and Zoning Board's not comfortable. There's this level of comfort. And it's not about being comfortable, it's about applying the criteria or not. And if that's the job, then you just, just do it, I think. And maybe that's oversimplifying it, but I don't think that we should be hypothesizing whether or not there'll be lawsuits or not lawsuits. We don't have a crystal ball in that regard. So I don't think it's fair to try to put that on top of this also. Let's just accept that, that appearance is subjective and just do it that way.
I think, if I may, DeeDee, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
If I, I don't think it's a responsible decision to tell Planning and zoning just to do something because there, the big issue here, there's a due process and equal protection, and there are case laws for this. The city of Boynton Beach, they, it said that the zoning actions were vague and subjective and they didn't have due process. It requires clear and objective standards. And if you don't have that, this, that's, that's a serious thing. We need to have, let them, our residents coming in have a clear process that they are going through. And just to say that we should just let our Planning and zoning make these decisions or our town staff, we're not, I don't think we're, that's not doing the right thing, in my opinion. It's arbitrary and capricious. There's land, in land development regulations, it requires regulations to contain specific and uniform standards. And that's what you're going to get called out on immediately. And so there is case law for this. And you're asking our staff and you're asking a Planning and Zoning Board to do something that they have said many, many times they don't feel comfortable with.
Okay, I just want to tell you that the definition of capricious can only apply to human beings. It's given to sudden and unaccountable changes of mood or behavior. So a code can't be capricious.
All right, thank you, DeeDee.
I think it's the decisions are.
So I guess its application can be. I was just told.
Yeah.
So its application can be, DeeDee, thank you. But that's not what we're here for. We're not here to, to attack other. But let's go ahead. We need a, we need a motion. We need to get passes. It's 9/11 and we need.
There's a motion on the table.
And that, can you repeat the motion?
Motion is to continue using the existing codes and to further discuss Vice Mayor Callahan's methodology that he proposed.
I thought the question was what, what we're going to tell the Planning and Zoning Board to do. I'm sorry.
No, this was the motion.
Okay.
Can we break that into two motions, maybe? Diana, you made that. Can you break that into two motions? Would you amend that?
I don't want to amend the motion.
Okay. We're going to have to do, we've had a second. DeeDee, you seconded that?
Correct.
So we need a roll call.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Motion fails, two to three.
Okay. John, somebody, do you want to make another motion?
You want a motion, I move we adopt the proposed new ordinance section that I passed out early in the meeting and the changes to the existing section.
Can you, okay. We need to wait a second on that.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
So John, if you were to say that you'd like to not adopt them, but have staff review those and bring those back to us, that would be something that I could support.
That was the original motion.
Yeah.
To bring it back.
So if you'd like to restate that motion? Now, would you like, could you restate that motion and say you'd like to have those brought, you know, let staff review them and bring them back to?
I think somebody, was I wrong? Somebody did not make that motion? No.
No.
Okay. So the question is, would I like to restate that motion? No. I think the, the problem is 780 was a bad ordinance a year or two ago, and my four colleagues passed it unanimously, and I think you should get on the same page and fix it. I'm done trying to help.
All right. Are you leaving, John? Do you want to take a break?
No.
No, you're good? Okay, because we want to keep everybody here. Anyone else have a motion or I can go ahead and make a motion? I'll go ahead and pass the gavel. I'll make a motion that we have staff look at John's proposed new ordinance section of the code and come back and, and give us an idea of how to reword some of this so that it's not, so it's voluntary, and bring it back at the next meeting, which would be October, the end of October. And I need to, see if we have a second on that.
Is there a discussion?
We need a second first, if we're going to have it, then you can have discussion.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, we have to come to some conclusion, so I need, we need help here. Let's keep it going. If we can't come to a conclusion, Len, what is the next step for us?
Next agenda item.
I have no idea. We're stuck with what we have. I don't know what else to tell you.
So John, let me talk to you a little bit about this. We can't just adopt something that staff has not had a chance to look at. That's the problem. Staff really doesn't need to look at this. Len needs to look at this. So you said adopt this. I don't feel that that's proper, having received it today, that we adopt it. So if you.
Make a different motion then.
Well, I did and it didn't pass, so.
Neither did mine.
Okay. So do you want me to make another motion, the same type of motion? Or would you like to maybe make a motion that could move this forward? Because we do need to move forward with this.
I think the council needs to move forward with all council members on the same page. So I think that you need something that can get the approval of the rest of the council.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to get that, DeeDee. I need everyone's input here because I don't know for sure that we'll all be on the same page with this. We need at least three votes to move something forward. Does anybody have any other ideas or suggestions to move this forward?
The motion that I would make would be to continue with option number two, to continue appearance review consistent with the regulations currently in effect, while in tandem, we work toward a different solution, that being John's proposal as analyzed by staff and the attorney. That would be my motion.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Can we just go to the survey?
No, we have to, we should come to some conclusion on this because we didn't sit here all night trying to figure this out and then not have an answer to it. John wants us all on the same page. And that page would be, John, that you want to adopt this? Is that the final, that you want to have happen, is to have this adopted without staff looking at it? The reality of it is, we can't really adopt something we just got today. So.
Well, we can't adopt it because it has to be done by an ordinance.
Right. Go ahead, John.
There's no public hearing on it. It would be unfair.
Well, it's just to move forward with the ordinance.
So do you want to just state we'll move forward with the ordinance, or with the, excuse me, with your proposal?
Honestly, I'm out of ideas. I'm just saying that this is a bad, 780 is a bad ordinance, and the four of you should come together and agree on some path forward. Don't look at me to keep doing what I think is trying to, you know, bridge the gap and trying to, you know, come to some kind of a conclusion. You need to do this. Both, four of you need to do this.
Okay, so I'm going to make another motion. John still has the gavel, that we have staff look at the proposal that John has given us today and see about how they can bring it back in some form so that it is voluntary. And we can look at, at using this particular proposal as we move forward. And I need a second on that.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, I'll make another sec, another motion. I'll make a motion to accept option number one. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, do we have discussion? No discussion, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Halpern?
Nay.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis? Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion fails, two to three.
So if I may, I think that keeping something, I mean, look, 780, John, to your point, it's not perfect, but we have something to, some level of protection in the interim. Staff has said that even though they're, you know, making recommendations to the planning and zoning board regardless of who feels comfortable or uncomfortable or that kind of thing, that the board is using their judgment to either approve or deny the projects. And the vast majority of them, basically all except one, even the ones where staff concluded it wasn't in harmony, are being approved. It's not like it's the other way around where there's been 21 applications and only one is approved. You know, there's 21 applications and, you know, 20 are approved. So I think we need a framework in place while we seek something better. And that's the motion that I had made to keep option two while we explore something else. And I think that makes sense. And if we ever get to council comments, then, you know, the Senate Bill 180 lawsuit is relevant to this because I think we have a case that shows how it's impacted us.
So DeeDee, do you have any problem with just staying with base zoning? I mean, we do have base zoning, which gives us height and setbacks and.
No, I, for that reason that I said, I think we need an insurance in place into John's photo there of the, I think it looked like the Magic Kingdom or something like that. We need something in place to prevent that Magic Kingdom thing, whatever that was, while we work potentially towards something else. And to me, that's the compromise. It doesn't take other solutions off the table. It says that we understand together that we need some level of insurance, some level of protection. You know, it's like the formation of the country where, you know, we talk about working towards a more perfect union. And that's what we would be doing here is working toward a more perfect union.
Well, the problem is we're not protected because it's not codified. So those metrics that they were doing are not codified. And based on the fact that they're not codified, we will end up having someone come in if we continue to let this go and put a Burt Harris Act on us. And that's, if we deny that, if we're saying we're going to keep the metrics and we'll just approve everything, well, that's, you know, you know, you're doing something still that is subjective.
I would just respectfully argue back that, you know, the idea of a lawsuit regarding anything is, you know, it's hypothetical. We can't presume that we know what the future of lawsuits will bring or what the outcome could possibly be. And I think we shouldn't allow that hypothetical to get in the way. You know, like people have brought up, there's already a lawsuit for the House that was approved that, you know, it's like a reverse harmony lawsuit. So I think we shouldn't let that be the obstacle is the prediction or trying to predict lawsuits.
But as a council member, we have to see all sides. We have to see the ramifications of our decisions. And it is a reality when you take, we've never taken property rights away. And we, that's, you know, if someone is denied that, then that's a real reality. The Burt Harris Act is a real, a reality in that regard. So I don't think we should not think about that. I think we have to. And I think the main thing, there's no due process here. People are not getting the ability to understand what they can build. It's not written down. There's nothing in the codes and that presents a problem. But anyway, if somebody's got another motion, we can go ahead and.
I think it's very capricious. It's very capricious, DeeDee, to say, oh, let's just risk the lawsuit. I mean, you're not going to pay for it or you will be one of the many taxpayers who paid for it in case. I would want to avoid a situation like this. And I don't want the taxpayers to tell me it was your decision that we have this lawsuit. And this is not hypothetical. I mean, there is SB 180 is there. It's written. It tells us what to do. There have been precedents. So we are, why are we thinking, believing in Santa Claus that it won't happen here in Juneau Beach? I like to err on the side of caution. I don't want to be capricious or frivolous.
All right, Rob, do you want to say something?
Sure. You know, regardless of which direction council has us take this evening, Len has repeatedly told us that we can't continue to use the metrics. So I want to be clear that we're not going to continue to use them because, Len, I have a question for you. And when I say use them, I mean in the hard cutoff, yes, no sort of way. If we're using those in that fashion, that's not, and they're not codified, what kind of legal concern is that? Is it a constitutional due process because we're enforcing cutoff rules that aren't codified? Or what is?
If we were using them as cutoffs, yeah.
Yeah.
We're enforcing rules that are not codified and inserting words in the ordinance that are not there.
So it's not even a matter of just arbitrary and capricious, which is a different claim altogether. And it's not a Burt Harris issue. This is a United States and Florida constitutional issue of us using these metrics in a way that we're not permitted to use them. So everyone up here making a decision tonight needs to know that if you were to direct staff to keep using the metrics the way that they have been using them as a go-no-go, we're not talking Burt Harris or arbitrary and capricious, we're talking a constitutional violation. And we're all sworn, including myself, to uphold the United States Constitution, the Florida Constitution, and all local laws, rules, and regulations. And that's not to say that Frank can't put together the summary sheet as long as we're not using that for our decisions, but that's a change over what we've been doing. So when I keep hearing we're going to keep doing what we're doing, I want you all to be clear, if you want us to do that, you're explicitly telling us to violate the Constitution, which violates all of our oaths.
So I.
Can I say?
Let Dee, I'll start with DeeDee and then I'll confuse Diane.
Just one quick comment. If it's so dire, then why did we get put in this situation to begin with? Why didn't somebody say that 780 is put, you know? Why didn't somebody, why didn't somebody say that, you know, we're setting you up to fail? I don't understand how that happened.
DeeDee, I'm saying it now and people want to fire me because I'm saying it. You know, I heard before the same comment. Why didn't someone tell us before? I can't explain why no one told you before, but we're telling you since May that this is the issue. And since I've been trying to tell people this is the issue, I've become the persona non grata that everybody wants to get rid of. So it's kind of like, why didn't you tell us? Oh, now that you did, let's get rid of you.
I didn't say you. I said someone. I know you weren't here then, so that's not applicable.
I just don't believe that we made 21 unconstitutional decisions by our planning and zoning board since this past two years ago. I think that these, the words in harmony, harmony can be achieved through the proper consideration of setback, scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, orientation, site planning, and landscaping. That's how we've been applying it. And the criteria that we got on May 2nd is what we've been using. And I fail to see an unconstitutional issue. I know we have a lawsuit now that from a homeowner that thinks that the house is too big that's being built next to them. And we have a lawsuit about a tower structure that says that our codes are constitutionally vague or something. But we, as DeeDee has said, we're always going to have lawsuits. And it's, it is, we shouldn't abdicate our authority over planning and zoning decisions for a potential lawsuit in the future. And these harmony codes have been in our code since 91, 92. So it isn't something that we should capriciously or cavalierly get rid of because they have worked for our town. I understand that it's a, it's a dollar issue for the developers and they want to build as big as they can build without any limitation, but that really doesn't work for the existing property owners and preserving the rights of existing property owners. So I would just caution for saying that, that what our planning and zoning board has done over the last two years is somehow illegal. Thank you.
Well, I think that it does have to do with the statute, the state statute and the Constitution. And I think that we have to be, we do have to be careful of that. And, you know, we can sit up here and discuss this all night long, but if we're not going to come to some kind of emotion or conclusion, do we just move this forward? Table it to the next time and try to?
See if.
Or if somebody else has got to come up with a motion because we have to move forward. We can't talk about it until 10:00.
No, I would like to say something. Please. Can I?
Yeah, oh yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to say that DeeDee has done both. She voted for it and she voted against it. So I would like to know what possessed her one time to vote for option one. I mean, she must have had a reason. Otherwise, I mean, I hope she doesn't capriciously vote here, but, you know, sinks it over. And at one point of time, you did vote for option one. So you were the only one who went back and forth. The other four are kind of stuck with their conviction. And then I also find it very surprising that the one lawyer in our group is the one who says you shouldn't be afraid of lawsuits. You can count on it. Maybe not. That, to me, is like a contradiction. You should be especially, Diana, worried about it since you are from the field. And you, a lawyer, should not promote getting a town into a lawsuit. Think about that. Thank you.
So. I'll respond to that because legal risk is subject to a policy judgment. So we should be, as council members, I think we're the ones that should be making those decisions based on the benefit to the community. And for our planning and zoning rules, if the choice is to get rid of our planning and zoning rules and just go by the numbers in 34268, I think that's a bad choice. And that's a bad policy decision based on a risk-reward situation.
I would like to respond. What is the benefit for a community to risk a lawsuit that they have to pay for it? I don't understand what the benefit is.
We have a charter obligation for visual continuity and consistent with neighborhood character. So the comprehensive plan is above the codes and then our policy judge, policy guidance would be below the codes as far as a hierarchical goes. Our codes have to implement the charter. And it's my belief that the harmony provisions are what implements our comprehensive plan requirements for visual continuity and consistent neighborhood character. So comprehensive plan, code, guidance. And I don't know how we do that without these criteria that have been in the code for some time that describe harmony.
So Diana, saying that doesn't really change anything because the comprehensive code is not our codes.
Yeah, I mean comprehensive code. I meant our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is above our codes and it requires visual continuity and consistent with neighborhood character. And I don't know how we get there. So thank you for bringing that up. It was intended to be the comprehensive plan.
But still, the director can, has to be able to interpret existing code. Code. That's code, that's something that's been codified that we've approved. They can't create, they can't enforce subjective standards unless council lawfully adopts that. So the comprehensive plan is sitting there, yes, I understand that, but we still have to have a code for it to be able to be enforced. Otherwise, it's subjective and that's what we shouldn't be doing. All right, are we going to move this forward? I guess if we're not going to come to a conclusion and there's no other motions, we can just continue with the discussion at the next meeting, which would be October 1st at this point. Is everyone agreeing with that or?
No, we don't have.
October.
Session. And I can't be here October 1st, which I apologize.
That's okay.
It's Kolen Dray. It's the night before Yom Kippur.
And I'm not available then either.
All right, so we can talk about that in a minute. Do we want to go to council comments or do we want to get through any more of?
The survey for the master plan.
Pardon me?
Survey for the master plan, sir.
Okay, so Caitlin says we should be going ahead and do number 11 options. So we're going to table this one to the next meeting, next full meeting. And I guess staff, you're going to continue doing what you're doing because we can't get a solution to this one.
Except for the metrics that Len says we can't use. So we'll keep doing what we're doing. We'll prepare the sheet with the summaries and all of that, but we will not be using those as go-no-go.
So John, at this point, they're not going to continue and kind of review what you've given them unless we give them direction to do that. Do you want to give them direction and do a consensus on that?
If you want my opinion, I hear four people refusing to compromise, not even one inch toward anyone else. So I'm not going to weigh in on it. I think you four need to work this out and at least indicate that you are willing to do what's best for the town and not your individual preferences here. Because I think the town is damn clear, they don't appreciate this, they don't like it. They want the council to move forward and come to a solution on these things, not talk it to death. So I'm not going to make the motion, but I'll agree with whatever the four of you want to do.
I'm going to pass that to you and I'm going to try and make a motion again to ask, get a, I don't even need a motion. Can I get a consensus to have staff look at John's proposal to bring it back at the next regular meeting and possibly give us some options in working with John's proposal? Can I get a consensus on that? No consensus. All right, so we're in stalemate for sure. All right, well, let's move on. Let's go ahead and go to.
Mayor, I just would like to remind you, there were people in the audience who said there are no council comments ever. And, you know, I want you to know it's 9:35, so if a councillor wants to make a comment and the people really want to hear the council comments, we should adhere to that.
Yeah, and that is not true. We actually have council comments usually after every meeting. The times that we can are times when we've had a group of people come in and we've had appearance review or it's been something major and we just don't get to those comments. So typically, we do have council comments. We do have to do the community survey master development plan quickly, Caitlin said, and we can leave the rest of them go and then go to quick council comments. So number 11, Caitlin, do you want to start that?
Just as part of the efforts to engage the community, staff provided these two options. If you want town staff to develop the survey questions in-house, which is option one, and handle the distribution to the community, or if you want option two, Polco to do the engagement, custom survey development, working with staff, the distribution at a cost not to exceed of the $15,000. This would include a presentation to the town council, all the analysis. It's basically being statistically valid through the use of a third party, which is Polco.
All right, do we have any public comment?
I do have one public comment. Siobhan O'Donnell?
Yes, I think the most important thing that you should do, and John is right, there's no, nobody's agreeing, but one thing you should do is listen to the residents. And, you know, it's upsetting to me that we have a new manager who's so political and pushing agendas that the Wheeler probably wants him to push. Because the people should be asked what they want and there shouldn't be a survey that says, do you want to destroy the commercial zoning this way or destroy the commercial zoning this way? Pick. There should be choices that allow people to choose to keep the zoning as it is. Because that zoning kept our town small for decades, 70 years. That was a great, that's a great zoning. The 2575 that Peggy has it out for and has destroyed to get Coretta in. That zoning, if we hold on to the zoning, we will keep our town in check from overdevelopment. And another thing is this, this survey has to be able to give the individual, it can't just be politically motivated by Peggy and Rob. It can't. The way you two coached Dana Little to come for a developer dream, just let's just destroy all our zoning and let them all put condos up. I mean, it's so sad what you two have done. I mean, you really need to give people a chance to preserve. That's what you're hearing all the time. People want to stay small. They want to protect the town. You should allow there to be an option in this survey that gives people a chance to protect what we have that has served us. Thank you.
Those are all the comments I received for this item.
Do you want to? I'll let Ann come up, yeah. You got to turn your mic on.
Your mic. The big button in the.
There, you got it.
Siobhan's right, we do need to keep the codes. We need to keep the codes as they are. John, you had a great idea. John, you had a great idea. You're afraid, you're afraid to get one of those clown houses. What about the pattern book? Why can't we just throw out 780? Use the pattern book as the guideline, and that'll avoid having another beehive house, a house that looks like a circus tent. Because you've got a pattern book. I mean, we've been going through this for, God, a year, two years? And keep the codes the same. Just throw out that 780, and everybody's protected. Thank you.
Is that it?
Those are all the ones I received for it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and kick this off. I understand this is an effort to engage the community in the master plan development, but I don't believe we need to spend $15,000 to figure out what the town wants. It's clear, no one in our community wants the town overdeveloped. They don't want taller buildings, they don't want more density, they want to keep our small businesses, they don't want more traffic and more congestion, they don't want a Fort Lauderdale. So, I'm not sure what other input we could possibly get, and surely not spending $15,000. And I think what we need to do is pursue how to accomplish that, what we already know our residents want. And that's not spending more money in additional surveys. We should have more work sessions where our community and businesses can engage. We need to be able to show them options, so they can visually maybe look at those options and understand how we can manage the town in the future. So, I'm not even for spending $2,000 on a survey, because I think that the residents have given us their input already. John?
My question on is, who's going to develop the questions, and is that going to be Colignitre Council? How detailed are the questions going to be? And will some kind of educational process be included with the questions? Because I think if anything goes out of the way related to master plan, most of the people in town are going to say, "What the heck is a master plan?" So, I think for getting beneficial responses, there's going to have to be an educational component, no matter which way it goes.
Diana?
I strongly want an outside survey company, so I would go for the $15,000. The problem that we have is Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Dana Little, he said they considered all town input. And then they came up with the 9010 and the 184 condominium units. So, there is a disconnect. And there's also a disconnect within council, whether we want a plan that immediately redevelops all of our commercial areas, or we want a plan that's going to preserve and protect what we have in our town. And so, those, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council also, their contract was called Community Vision. And part of it was that they were going to come up with a community vision, and we never got that articulated. So, I think that we need to articulate that we want a plan that's for development in 20 years, and that it protects what makes our town unique. And I don't think we can get that from an in-house survey. We didn't get it from Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, so we need to plan, we need to use another vendor. And I'm okay with Polco doing that.
All right, Mary Ann?
Well, I'm a little bit torn here. I don't know if we should or we shouldn't. I would, on one side, I think it would be good if everybody in the town would have a voice. Because we have people here, and they are either from one side or the other, but the big majority, we don't hear from. And they have an opinion, like Mr. Carp mentioned there. It's like a petition of 183 signatures. Mr. Saludo said there are 341 houses on the ridge. So, maybe we would get the opinion of these people, because I only see him of all the 341 houses. And maybe it would be good if they had an opportunity to also weigh in. But then again, I'm also concerned who's making up the questions. Because you can really guide questions and expect, and lead them to certain answers that you would want to hear. So, it should not be the council who sets up the question, it shouldn't be this staff, it should be a total objective group. And maybe this way, we would hear, who is the majority? Either this side or that side? I would be curious to know, because we hear only from the people who are the most vocal. We don't hear about the people who sit at home, who say, "I can't stand to sit there for five hours." I sympathize with them. Who wants to listen to a dissertation on harmony for three hours? This is like a punishment for them. I don't even want to talk about me. I just, even the police, I mean, they probably never heard so much about harmony. They're probably starting to talk about it too now. I think maybe it's good to give everybody a voice.
All right, DeeDee?
I have a problem.
Yes, yes.
Don't talk to DeeDee while I'm talking.
Yep, the survey. I think it would put to rest a lot of hypotheses. And again, there's pros and cons to it, but, you know, quality cities do use surveys. Example Jupiter and Toquesta, they use surveys to gather information, data from their residents, and they use that to guide their strategic plan, they use it to guide their master plan and their budget. You know, so if we can achieve a statistically relevant and reliable response to our questions, assuming that the questions are created non-biased, then I'm open to that. $15,000 is a lot, but we don't ever have to do the survey again. It's a one-time expense, and it would give us definitive answers to the questions and release us from continually going in these hypothesis circles of making assumptions. Yes, people have spoken out, they do want to keep the town small, they want to curtail large development, but they also don't feel that they're being heard, because they keep saying these things over and over again, but some of the council decisions don't reflect what the people are saying. So, there's a disconnect between their voices and our actions. And I think having a survey would also just let people know that we really do care what they think, and, you know, hopefully, we would listen to the results. So, I'm in favor of investing, not spending the money, but investing the money in ourselves.
All right, and then I'll just follow up with that. And I think we definitely need to talk to the community, but what we have to do is work sessions where our community and businesses can actually get engaged and not just check a box off. You know, they need to be, we need to have work sessions where they can come in and hear, you know, the issues, and talk about what they want, and give us their vision. And that's where, if we're going to spend any money, it should be done through a work session. But we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make a motion. Or Diana, you want to make another comment?
No, I'll make a motion to go with option two, Polka Engagement and Custom Survey Development, not to exceed $15,000. And I would want them to bring the questions and any educational material back to council for review.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Microphone, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, we'll do council comments, but we only have two minutes each.
We do have a pending motion that needs a vote.
What is that one?
The motion is to join the Senate 180 lawsuit.
Okay, for, okay. Do we have discussion on that? We had a second on it, so I, we've been in this situation, I'll start it. We've been in this situation before, where there's been lawsuits, and we've decided not to join, because basically, everyone's going to come out with the end result of whatever the lawsuit is. So, we have chosen not to spend the money and put that kind of money in. And Len, if it's, if I'm correct, it was like $5,000, right?
This one's 10.
It's 10,000. And then they could come back and ask for more, correct?
Yeah, it's 10 for the initial lawsuit, five if it's appealed to the District Court of Appeal, and another five if it goes to the Supreme Court. So, it's 10 upfront, potential for 20.
All right, so I'm not for doing that. I think we should let the big guys go ahead and file that lawsuit and keep moving on it, and then we'll benefit from it. John?
I can't support going ahead right now, we only have a few minutes left. We may want to consider a resolution expressing our opposition to that parts of 780 that stop us from changing our codes to regulate development.
All right, Diana?
I like the idea of the resolution, and I wouldn't be opposed to exploring more information about the potential lawsuit, but I'd like to see the numbers.
Mary Ann?
I'm against joining the group who is doing the, who is participating in the lawsuit. We are a very small town. There are bigger towns with bigger budgets, and I don't think we would make a big difference anyway.
All right, DeeDee, do you have anything else you want to say?
Well, I had made that motion. So, do we have a consensus to bring back the information at any level, or it's dead?
We can get that consensus if you'd like.
I'd like consensus to at least bring back information. Staff could, Len could provide us with the resolution that he did for North Palm Beach, and we could at least take a look at it and see.
Okay, well, you still have a motion on the table, so we need to do a roll call on the motion, and that motion is just for, what was the motion? Read it back.
The motion is to join the Senate 180 lawsuit.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to, the motion would be to have staff and the town attorney provide counsel with information on the Senate Bill 180 lawsuit, including the draft resolution example from North Palm Beach.
I'll second it. I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Diana, do a roll call?
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
So, they'll be bringing back just the information on the...
The other thing is, I can't make the October 1st work session. Could we make it the following day, on Thursday?
Well, what about a suggestion? Because we don't have any of the information. And I think, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the reason you wanted to do that was to get out some questions ahead of time, and maybe, you know, maybe I won't put words in your mouth, but you can tell us exactly why you wanted to do that. But I thought it would be better if we did it before council hour, perhaps, on that Friday before council hour, because we would have our agenda material. Any questions that we had for staff, we could possibly ask at that particular meeting as well. And I'll get everybody's opinion on that, and as well as changing the October 1st date. John?
I'll agree if we start at noon.
Okay. Is that good? So, starting the Friday of our council hour at noon?
What date is that?
We're not having one in October because of Oktoberfest, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, we could still do it on that...
Sorry, they're usually the third Thursday of the month prior to council meetings.
What is?
I mean, sorry, they're Fridays.
Fridays.
Because of the Oktoberfest.
Can't we just have it on Thursday instead of Wednesday, the first? Isn't Thursday the second?
How about the 16th before Oktoberfest?
Thursday's actually Yom Kippur.
Oh, that's the actual day, so that's even worse.
It's Colignitre, the first.
Can we do it the following, well, I'm out of town the following week?
Could we do it on the 17th, but we just started at noon? And Oktoberfest isn't till that evening.
But that's going to put staff at a disadvantage.
True, you guys want to get ready and have fun.
Be setting up.
Yeah.
How about Thursday, the 16th?
Aye.
Can we do it the, we have interviews, why don't we do it in conjunction with the interviews? We have the presentation interviews on the 15th?
I'm not here.
You're not, you're not going to be there for the interviews?
I told Caitlin I wasn't here, but I don't know...
The October 15th?
I'm not here, I'm sorry.
All right, what dates are you gone, DeeDee?
I'm back the night of the 15th at 11 o'clock.
I can't do it on the 16th. Only problem. We could do it on the 10th? Is that possible?
I'm out of town from the 9th to the 15th.
What other dates? Somebody throw dates out here. Planning and zoning is on the 6th?
What about this Friday?
I mean, you must like this very much, that you want to see us all.
What are we going to talk about? Shouldn't we come up with an agenda? It would help, I think, if we had some kind of agenda, so that we're not just sitting there for an hour.
We can talk about harmony.
If I may, at the last meeting, the council briefing's intent was to have staff bring updates to the town council.
But wouldn't it be helpful if we brought up specific items, maybe, that, you know, we also had questions about?
I think so.
I mean, we could email questions to Caitlin and collate a list, or topics to Rob. Yeah. Well, so what date are we on?
John suggested October 3rd. I won't be here. My dad's getting surgery on the 2nd, so I have to be in Illinois.
No, I suggested Friday, September 26th.
Oh, sorry.
The 26th?
The 26th, two days from now.
September 26th?
I won't be here, I'm leaving. That's the day I leave.
Monday, the 29th.
I'm gone.
It's my turn to say I can't do it.
Do you want to skip October and start it in November?
Yeah, we don't really have a subject besides harmony. So, can we wait? I need some time to recover from it.
Okay, we need to throw out some other dates, unless we want to wait until November. Our meeting in November is on the 12th. We could do it on the 12th before the meeting. We can do it on the 7th, before mayor's hour. Oh, mayor's hour is not on the 7th, is it? Yes, it is, because we're, so mayor's hour is on the 7th.
You mean council hour?
A council hour, sorry. It was still in there as mayor's hour, for some reason. Council hour, yeah.
So, what date is that? November 7th?
November 7th.
And we start at 11?
Now, is this open to the public? How do we, is this a closed-door session? Is it a, no?
It's open to the public, yeah. We have to have staff there. Len, are you free? Because you have to be present, too. Or...
Well, you might have someone new.
We might have someone new, but not knowing that.
But, yes, I'm free. Need be.
So, does the 7th work? We'll do it at 11 or 12?
What day of the week is that?
Friday.
It's a Friday before council hour.
And we'll have the agenda for the town council meeting by then? I thought that we were supposed to go over the agenda items at this particular...
Well, that was a different, that was when I was proposing council pre-meeting workshops like Toquesta does. That was something different, where discussion items were vetted out, and then, you know, that was a different thing. I think John's topic was that it was specifically manager updates versus agenda briefings, I guess.
DeeDee, did you say Wednesday, October 1st, all day is out?
Yes.
So, we're looking at November 7th, we will have the agenda out by then.
You wanted to start in the morning?
I mean, I could do October 1st in the, during the day. Well, it's just...
It would be like from 11 to, what? I'm not, not four hours, right? This isn't a four-hour meeting?
It can be up to four hours.
That's brutal. I mean, an update should be two hours. I can't imagine that we need more than a two-hour update.
It's up to council.
What time, Len, could you do?
All right, we need a decision on the dates.
It'd have to be down by 5:00, so anytime before that.
12 to 2?
On what day, DeeDee?
On the 1st.
I'm not going to be here. Remember, I leave on the 26th, and I'm gone that week. You guys can have it, I can try to zoom in. But I don't, I would not want to do the appearance review being, not being here.
Then I guess November.
Can I, need more input, everybody? 7th? Do you want to just schedule the 7th?
At what time?
11 or 12?
What day is that?
That's a Friday, that's council hour day. It's before our meeting on the 12th, so we will have the agenda as well.
And I have, I'm not available until 12.
Okay, so... Okay, so...
So what, 1 to 3? Something like that?
Can you do 12, Diana? 12 to 3?
After lunch?
12:30.
All right, well, we could do 1, we could do 1 to...
I would put a two-hour cap on it. I don't think updates should take more than two hours.
Okay, so 1 to 3 on November 7th. John, do you have any, anything to add to that?
That's fine.
All right. Okay. So Caitlin, is there anything else pressing that we actually need to talk about because it's almost time to adjourn?